to bring to order the Select Board meeting of Monday, June 30, 2025. We are going to move into executive session pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 30a, Section 21. We're going to be moving into room 309 in the Town Hall Building to discuss the following issues: The Veteran Service Officer Contract, Mass. General Law, Chapter 30a, Section 21a 3; to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel; and Director of Public Works Contract, Max. General Law, Chapter 30a, Section 21a 3; to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-personnel. We are also going to review and approve the following executive session minutes: March 24, 2025; March 31, 2025; April 15, 2025; April 28, 2025; May 19, 2025; and June 2, 2025.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by Mr. McDonnell. Our intent is to return for a 6:30 start of our regular session. Currently, Mr. Tattlebaum is not here. We expect to see him for our 6:30 session. All in favor?
Roll call.
Mr. O'Neil?
Yes.
Mr. McDonnell?
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
And myself. Vote yes. We'll be moving into executive session. We welcome you all to this telecast of Dartmouth High Volleyball on Dartmouth Community Media. I'm Ben Smith. We're with Bouvier.
Now touch over from Augusto. Not great. Yeah! And Dartmouth is going to the final goal.
Santos with the shot and...
Oh! He made it in! Austin Santos! Nothing but net. Ha ha ha!
Here's Ben Smith, the commentator. Here comes the tongue-out action. Yes.
We even drafted our sports announcer over here to do a little bit of singing, so I'm looking forward to that one.
I gotta warm up my vocal cords.
Go in! God! Justin leaves with the homer! And it's kicked and it scores! On their last breath! And it is caught! Touchdown! Jayden Nutes-Maderas!
I'm gonna turn it over to our favorite, Ben Smith, in a second.
Well, say hello to all of your followers out there, Ben.
Hello, all. Hope to see you all at Dean College next year.
All right, I'd like to bring to order tonight's meeting of the Select Board. We are all present, so we will do all roll call votes, all roll votes, and I'd ask everyone to stand so we can pledge allegiance, and then I'd ask you to remain standing for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I ask that, as we pause, we remember the service members who are continuing to fight for our freedom now, to those who have served the country and have paid the ultimate price. Thank you. Also, tonight, I'd just like to remind everyone that this is being broadcast live, and we'll be able to be viewed at nauseam on DCTV. So, we will get started with our first order of business. Is Georgiana Goulding here? Step right up.
No appointments, new business.
New business. So, before us, we have Georgiana Goulding, who has been a resident for some time, and would like to be on the Dartmouth Cultural Council. So, Georgiana, why don't you just tell us a little bit about yourself?
My husband and I bought a house here as summer residents in 2011, and we became full-time members a couple of years later. I just retired as advancement director at our sister school in New Bedford, so I have some experience with grant applications and that kind of stuff, so I like to give back to my community and help with the Dartmouth Cultural Council.
I'm not going to say, "And they need it," but we all need it, so thank you very much.
Of course.
Does anyone have questions for Georgie?
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Mr. Mickelson.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. McDonnell. All in favor?
Aye.
Very difficult process. Thank you very much.
My pleasure.
Much success with the Dartmouth Cultural Council.
Thank you.[132.87][132.87](APPLAUSE).
All right, next on our list is a change of officers at the America Multi-Cinema, the AMC Theater at the Dartmouth Mall. Come on up.
I brought all these free tickets.
So, and you are?
All right, I'd like to bring to order tonight's meeting of the Select Board. We are all present, so we will do all roll call votes, all roll votes, and I'd ask everyone to stand so we can pledge allegiance, and then I'd ask you to remain standing for a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I ask that, as we pause, we remember the service members who are, continue to fight for our freedom now, to those who have served the country and have paid the ultimate price. Thank you. Also, tonight, I'd just like to remind everyone that this is being broadcast live, and we'll be able to be viewed at nauseam on DCTV. So, we will get started with our first order of business. Is Georgiana Goulding here? Step right up.
No appointments, new business.
New business. So, before us, we have Georgiana Goulding, who has been a resident for some time, and would like to be on the Dartmouth Cultural Council. So, Georgiana, why don't you just tell us a little bit about yourself?
My husband and I bought a house here as summer residents in 2011, and we became full-time members a couple of years later. I just retired as advancement director at our sister school in New Bedford, so I have some experience with grant applications and that kind of stuff, so I like to give back to my community and help with the Dartmouth Cultural Council.
I'm not going to say "and they need it," but we all need it, so thank you very much.
Of course.
Does anyone have questions for Georgie?
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Mr. Mickelson.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. McDonald. All in favor?
Aye.
Very difficult process. Thank you very much.
My pleasure.
Much success with the Dartmouth Cultural Council.
Thank you.[264.33][264.33][applause]
All right, next on our list is a change of officers at the America Multi-Cinema, the AMC Theater at the Dartmouth Mall. Come on up.
I brought all these free tickets.
So, and you are?
Dave Pascreus.
Okay, Dave. I'm looking at my paperwork here.
Just for the record, Madam Chair, any time the corporation changes the offices of directors, they have to go back to the communities where they hold liquor licenses to make that change.
So, this is a standard order of business?
Basically, yeah, this is at corporate. This has nothing to do with the people working at the mall.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by Mr. McDonald. All in favor?
Aye.
There you go.
Thank you.
Another tough day on the job. All right, let's see, if I could get this to work, that would be helpful. All right, next on our list is Tailgate Bar and Grill.
Anybody?
All right, Tailgate Bar and Grill is looking for us to, in essence, acknowledge that they are receiving a Keno license from the state. This is not something necessarily that we grant. They apply to the state, and the state has approved them for Keno. So, that's the Tailgate Sports Bar and Grill on 227 State Road.
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Mr. Mickelson.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. McDonald. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, next, we have the Veterans Service Officer Contract, which is Matt Brulay. He is not here.
He's just here.
Yeah, no.
No.
The board has the contract.
The board has the contract. The board has the contract. We've reviewed the contract. Mr. Brulay hasn't reviewed the contract, so what?
So, he signed the contract.
Signed the contract, so it's just for our signatures.
To approve and sign the contract.
It should be, we should note, we should note the signing of the contract with the term.
Okay, so hang on, let me look at the term.
July 1st, 2025 to June 30th, 2028.
Rea contract.
Rea contract.
July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2028.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by Mr. McDonald. All in favor?
Aye. I'd like to, I, do I need to recuse myself because I was not in the discussions previous?
No.
I don't think so.
No.
You had seen the contract because it came as a packet.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You don't have to do that.
Okay. So, I think that's fine. Okay, pass that around. On the next item of business, Director of Public Works Contract, we are holding that to, pushing that to our next meeting. Next, we have the Town Administrator's Contract Amendment, and as you know, Cody Hadad was, has been selected as our new town administrator. At the time, he had given us a date of July 28th. He has since been able to come earlier, on July 14th, so we have a new form to sign to move him to start on July 28th. Any comments, questions on the board?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. McDonald, seconded by Mr. Mickelson. All in favor?
Aye.
I will now pass around this to be signed. Oh, I stole this from you. You'll need that later. All right. We're going to put hold on the next item because she may be late. All right. Next is a great event, even better than awarding Keno licenses. We get to recognize our own, and when I say "our own," tonight, we recognize Dartmouth Community Media. So, this past year, DCTV, as we like to call them, won four awards at the 2024 ACM Nor Easter Awards, including first place for overall excellence in 2023. These prestigious honors reflect DCTV's steadfast dedication to creating impactful community-centered programming over the last 30 years, and be it further known that the Dartmouth Select Board extends its best wishes and continued success. On that note, I'd like to invite Peter Chase up to the mic to tell us a little bit more about these awards, because although we have a first place, we have others, and it's really important to hear the shows that they won their awards on.
Thank you.
Welcome, Peter.
Thanks. Thanks for having us today. Yeah, the awards were great. We won overall excellency in our budget category, which is, I think, two or three budget categories, so that was great, and that's all northeast. We won first place for, I'm taxing my memory right now.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
We won first place, a second place, and a third place, so it was great. I think the first place was for cooking with Henry Bousquet for the holiday thing. We won third place for our Thanksgiving football coverage, and second place was the PSA with the Dartmouth Police Department on porch pirates, so, so I got a little bit to thank people. First, I'd like to extend my gratitude to the Select Board for the citation and continued support for our department. This recognition means a lot, a big deal to us at DCTV. Like you said, we've been on the air since April 1995, so that's just over 30 years. We just hit our 30-year mark. We constantly work to grow and improve, and today's acknowledgement affirms that. I'd like to take a moment to thank a few individuals for guidance and dedication who have been instrumental to our success, to our Board of Directors. We've got two members here, Russell Robinson's right here, James Thompson, who's been with us for a long time, Cynthia Rose is also on the board, unfortunately, she had a family engagement that she had to be at this evening, and Jonathan Galishaw is one of our newest members. We thank them for their leadership over the years. Thanks to my full-time staff, Mike Maniz is in the back. He doesn't want to be out in front of camera, he never does, so he's in the back. Daniel Maderis is here, Jonathan Silver, who just came on in December of last year, and Chad Amaral, who was a former employee of ours. He was big in winning these awards. I should also recognize, like I said, retired detective Kyle Costa, he was a part of that, and Chef Henry Bousquet, who contributed to those also. And then also, we brought some of our part-time staff here, so we have Todd Migliacci and Jess Gove. Both of them have been actually with us for about 20 years. Todd just hit his 20-year mark last September. Jess, I think, is coming up on her 20-year mark this year. Daniel Ferguson, he's been here many years also, and it's funny because these all came through us through UMass Dartmouth. They were all students at UMass Dartmouth, and they were part of the work-study program, and they've stayed on ever since, so it's been a great collaboration with them. Want to thank all of our commentators. Ben is one of them, Jim is another one of them, so they do a great job in calling the games for us and keeping everyone informed. The hard work and dedication that we have creating these programs, you know, has been great, and it's great to be recognized for that. So, to go on to something else, though.
Wait.
There's more.
Okay.
There's more, hold on, wait, there's another award that you don't know about yet.
Oh, all right.
So, tonight, I'm thrilled to share that, some exciting news. Last week, DCTV staff attended the National Conference for Alliance for Community Media, held in Boston this year. During the event, the prestigious Hometown Video Awards were presented. Each year, nearly 1,000 entries are evaluated by a panel of over 150 judges from the industry, with awards going to programs that demonstrate creativity, address community needs, and challenge conventional formats. I'm proud to announce that Daniel Maderis received first place in the Educational Activities category.[827.76][827.76][applause]
Yes.
Great job.
For the video he created of Dartmouth High School Theater Company's Grease promo in 2024. Daniel produced, recorded, edited this piece, making the first national award won by one of our programs. Dan has been the creative force behind all of our graphics, designs, and our reburning a few years ago. Congratulations to Dan for this well-deserved award. We look forward to many more in the future. Thank you again for the opportunity, and if the board has any questions, we'll take some now.
Mr. O'Neal?
No questions, Pete, just another example of great work, and you've got a great board behind you also, so congratulations.
Mr. McDonald?
Having been involved with DCTV for over 30 years, the vast improvement from day one is just absolutely remarkable, and you guys have just continued to strive the best, and it's really one of the top-watch shows on, in this area for many things. I mean, if you're looking for government, it's here. If you're looking for something for education, it's there, and the variousness of the broadcast, how you guys cover this town with the staff that you have is absolutely amazing. The football announcers, though, could be a little bit better.[921.12][921.12][laughter] We're working on it.
We're working on it.
They get rid of them.
They could announce more wins.[926.12][926.12][laughter]
And I understand you guys also have Paul Santos under an exclusive contract. I think we need to kind of take care of that a little bit more.
Exclusive, I don't know, that guy's everywhere.[935.76][935.76][laughter]
You're welcome, Joe.
Mr. Talavon?
It's not only, certainly agree the work you do is extraordinary, but in the age we are in now, with such fractured communications, ability to reach people, and through, you know, the demise of the newspaper industry and social media, and there's just so many ways to reach, and there's so many things going forward in our town that have become more and more vital to people's lives, decisions we make, putting out stuff, and DCTV's shown the ability to put together programs and productions that are going forward, that we can really tell the story to our residents so we can make them as informed as possible, and I look forward to the collaboration where we can really do our best to let people know what's going on so they can participate in anything. I've been involved, with Peter's total and 100% cooperation, I do the best he can with the resources he has, and I look forward to that because we've got a lot of, we've got a lot of work to do in terms of running our town and satisfying our residents, so I think it's going to be a great mission going forward, as it's been up till now. I really salute you.
Absolutely. We're always there to try to get the information out.
Thank you.
We all salute you, Peter. We go back a long way, and nothing surprises me about you. You always do everything first class, and you're surrounded by a wonderful team that you've made a wonderful team, and thanks to you and your hard work. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And thank you guys, and gals, sorry.
Last but not least, I just wanted to say that quality productions from a quality staff. I know that we are the other communities look to, DCTV, as a jewel in the crown between our equipment and our professionalism, what you've been able to do. I'm going to personally talk about my work with you as, when I was an administrator in the school department. We'd have these monthly kind of tidbits that you'd do, and someone would come, and whatever we put together, it would look beautiful in the end. You not only filmed school committee previously, now that the school department has taken over that, which is great, which gives you another source of folks to work with you and train, but using the footage that you have gathered from the high school, from covering plays at schools, and the montage that you've been able to do inserting during, say, the Thanksgiving Day Game, which is one of the most memorable. If I can't make it there, I have it on at home, and to see the spotlight of the seniors is wonderful, and to have those highlight reels, they're really wonderful keepsakes. The town meeting info shows, I think for town meeting members and population in general get to see what's going on and get to hear a little bit of rationale behind what it is that we do. Quality audio, quality video, everything top-notch, Peter, so applaud, applaud, applaud. I don't know when you sleep.[1144.66][1144.66][applause] Something in town, the bench dedication, the trees, the lighting of the buoys, the Warren Hathaway, there's DCTV providing background music, providing sound and everything, so thank you all, because you're up there, but it takes a village.
Right, and that's why I wanted to do it tonight, because we wanted to do it a couple weeks ago, but everyone's kind of busy, and I said, no, I really want the team here to be part of this.
I thank you. So, I'm going to have the team come up.
Yep.
And we're going to take a picture. So, but first, we'll all come up, and then I'll hand you the proclamation. Have you stand.
Your ladies, Peter.
I'm going to give you this, and then you're going to stand here.
Thank you so much.
Thanks.
Good job.
Oh, sorry, thank you.
Nice job.
Hi there.
Good job.
Thank you.
Jimmy.
All right, everybody stand up here. Stay here. Run around with the camera.
I'm going to run in the mountain.
That's okay.
You got it? Squeeze on, guys.
You want me to take it ready, so you can be?
Oh, I don't need to be. Oh, very nice. I'll take a few. Very nice. Thank you, another.[1234.47][1234.47][applause]
So, if you can indulge me. So, early, I forgot to mention one very important group, and more especially, one remarkable individual. Sorry.
Don't.
This is going to be tough. For those who've been around DCTV for a while, recall that DCTV began in the high school. We taught video production classes during their early years. I had the privilege of seeing many talented students pass through Dartmouth, some of who went on to careers in Hollywood, news, sports, television. When the high school was built, the program was split, and for a time, our interaction with the students diminished. However, there's, through the efforts of Rob Parati, the DHS TV media teacher, the support of Ryan Shea, the principal of Dartmouth High School, and the broader Dartmouth public school administration, we've built the partnership back up in recent years. Today, student activities contribute to our coverage of athletic events, running the camera during the replay system, and managing graphics during the game. In 2022, Mr. Parati approached me about a student who wanted to take the role of play-by-play announcer. This was a significant shift for us, as for two decades, only adults were handling this responsibility. After consulting with DHS staff and DHS, the DCTV Board, we launched a pilot program. That's when I met Ben Smith. At the time, Ben was a sophomore with a deep love for sports. Unfortunately, a severe leg injury during training camp sidelined his athletic pursuit, but it opened the door for another passion of his, calling games. Ben started as a color analyst, but quickly transitioned to play-by-play. Now, I won't pretend these last three years were without challenge. Let's just say Ben took a few cues from announcers like Tommy Heinsohn and Jack Edwards. He made it clear that if you wore Dartmouth green, you could do no wrong. I'm not sure there's a referee in local high school sports scene who hasn't been on the receiving end of a "come on, man," or "that's a terrible call" from Ben Smith. But here's what set him apart from some of the games, some other games that went too far. I'd get a text at the end of the night, Ben apologizing, saying, "How can I do better? How can I be better?" And we, I kid you not, we'd be texting back and forth till 2:00 in the morning sometimes, and he's trying to learn, and, you know, he'll text me on a Friday night, Saturday morning, Sunday morning, all hours of the day and night, and I appreciate it. He was relentless in ensuing, we cover all kinds of games that mattered, always advocating for better production quality. He was instrumental in having us start covering the Unified Sports Program, which Ben got on ESPN Top 5, Top 10 Plays. He was number five on Austin Santos' half-court shot, so Ben can add that. He's respected among his peers, and this was very evident this year during the Senior Awards. I've been, like I said, I've been in this town now for 30 years, let's really say that, but we were at Senior Awards, Ben got an award for DHS TV media program, and five rows of students stood up and gave him a round of applause. It was a very touching moment. We've prepared, oh, sorry, we're going to go back real quick. All right, we've prepared a short video of some of Ben's highlights, so Mike, if you're ready back there, here we go. Three, two, one.
We welcome you all to this telecast of Dartmouth High Volleyball on Dartmouth Community Media. I'm Ben Smith with Will Bouvier. Now, touchover from Agasso, not great! Yeah! And Dartmouth hits, going to the final! Santos with the shot, and, oh! He made it in! Austin Santos! Nothing but net! Ha-ha-ha! Here's Ben Smith, the commentator. Here comes the tongue-out action, yes.
We even drafted our sports announcer over here to do a little bit of singing, so I'm looking forward to that one.
I got to warm up my vocal cords. Go in! God! Justin leaves with the homer! It's kicked, and it's scored! On their last breath, and it is caught! Touchdown! Jayden Nutes-Maderis. I'm going to turn it over to our favorite, Ben Smith, in a second.[1512.62][1512.62][applause]
Well, say hello to all of your followers out there, Ben.
Hello, all. Hope to see you all at Dean College next year. I'm Ben Smith, saying so long, everybody.[1543.04][1543.04][applause]
So, Ben, on behalf of DCTV and the entire Dartmouth community, thank you. Thank you for your passion, commitment, dedication, friendship over all three years. On a personal note, I'll miss those late-night texts about upcoming games and records about to be broken. As you head to Dean College, know that you'll be, we'll be cheering you on. I might give the athletic director and your media teacher a heads-up about the energy you'll bring, but I'm also sure of them that they're gaining someone that's truly special. This isn't goodbye. We know you're going to come back and be with us as a commentator in the future, but thank you very much, and here's a little bit from the staff.
You're welcome to the mic. And Ben, let me tell you, let it be known that the Dartmouth Select Board hereby extends its congratulations to Benjamin Smith in recognition of outstanding dedication and volunteerism throughout your time at Dartmouth High School as a commentator for the Dartmouth Community Media. Your insightful, engaging commentary enhance the community's viewing experience while showcasing the talents and achievements of our student athletes. Your commitment and enthusiasm leave a lasting impression on our community, and be it further known that the Dartmouth Select Board extends its best wishes for continued success. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.[1639.35][1639.35][applause]
You have had me on the other side of the microphone, have interviewed me at the toy drive up at Target. Now, I'm changing the channel. So, I understand you're off to Dean College. Tell us what you're going to, your major.
Yeah, so I'm going to be majoring in sports broadcasting, so a little bit about it is, the guy who runs it is John Rook, so he's been the play-by-play commentator for, yeah, he's the play-by-play commentator for the Friars. He's also the voice from the Gillette Stadium Games as well, so like, I went to a summer program over the summer, and I really got into, like, really got really clicked into the program as well, so it made me really interested in Dean College, and that's why I chose this college, and it reminds me a lot of Dartmouth. It's a small town, too. It's not beaches, it's not nice, like, on the beaches and water.
You got to come back.
Yeah, but it does remind me of Dartmouth a lot, so that's all.
It's close to Gillette, too, so.
Of course.
Awesome. Just seeing the montage that they put together, you have been really a key piece in the high school program. I am a, you know, video junkie, so I have watched your programs and your interviews with adults, with some of the teachers, the coaches, as well as some of the students and athletes, so well done. You come with quite a resume as you go into a freshman year.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't think you couldn't pick a more, a better person to enhance what you want to do than John Rook. John was also a sportscaster for, I believe it was WPRI or somewhere.
Yeah, you're right, WPRI.
And yes, he's been the voice of Gillette Stadium for the last, wow, 15 years, if not 20 or more.
It's 30.
30, okay. See, I've gone through a couple of them, so, but yeah, I think he, I think you're going to do very well. You're right, Dean College doesn't have any beaches, but it is in a great setting, and it's close to the sports hub, and I think you're going to, you're going to do very well over there, and plus, I can't knock your fashion statement, you've got a hell of a nice shirt there.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Just a, it's going to be, it may sound like a little bit of shameless help. My daughter is a graduate of Dartmouth High School. She loved Dartmouth High School. She went on to college, and she's now a broadcaster, news anchor for CNBC London. And she came back to Dartmouth High School to make a presentation to, you were there in a group at the DHS TV studio. My daughter was overwhelmed by the staff, the equipment, and the setup in Mr. Parati's program. She said it rivals what she has in CNBC London in their studio there. And it's no wonder that we produce what we do because of the kind of quality of staff, leadership, equipment, and guys like you and girls like you to do it. She was overwhelmed by what we have in this town, and the collaboration that Peter has made to work with Rob Parati to make it work and make it better is incredible, and it's a testament to what we all enjoy here. So, you're going to do great, and we certainly appreciate what you've done. Thank you, Ms. Brooks.
Thank you, Mr. Tatalom.
I'm sure we will be hearing fond memories of what you've done and what you're going to bring to the table in the future. Good luck.
I also know that one of your buddies is Jackson Hart.
Yeah.
And his dad, Andy Hart.
Yeah.
Radio broadcaster.
Yeah.
Watch out.
Jackson's actually playing D1 football, you know that?
I did not.
Yeah.
Where's he going?
University of New Hampshire.
Ooh, wow. Part of proud, one of my former students.
Just a few.
Just a few. Ben, come on down.
All right.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Nice job, man. Good luck.
Good luck to you.
We didn't say we knew him when. Very exciting. Thank you so much. All right, thank you so much. Thank you all of DCTV and Board for coming tonight. It's nice to see all of you without a camera blocking your faces, even you, Mike in the back room. So, thank you very much. Next up, we're going to talk about the Library of Things.
What a tough act to follow.
That was a tough act. I'm so sorry.
Oh, my gosh, it was, it was tough when it was just DCTV, but then...
Then Ben, and I needed a tissue.
To see an amazing young person doing so well. Me, too. And just for the record, I'd like to say, Peter mentioned he's worked for the town for 30 years. I don't know how, because we graduated from high school together, so I don't know how he's been here for 30 years.
How's that possible? Well, welcome, Dina St. Pierre.
Thank you very much. I'm happy to be here tonight so that I can talk to you about an exciting new collection at the Dartmouth Public Library, the Library of Things. And when you hear that, you might be wondering, what does that even mean? So, I do have just some slides to go along with what I'm talking about. So, a Library of Things collection expands the concept of a library beyond just books to include physical items and objects that can be borrowed and used by patrons. Collections run the gamut from, you know, household tools, kitchen equipment, outdoor gear, craft supplies, musical instruments, learning resources, it's just the list goes on and on of what can make up a library of things. These collections are typically designed to provide access to items that people might not be able to afford, or maybe they don't have space for this particular item. So, it really fosters community sharing and reducing individual consumption, which, of course, contributes to sustainability, which is important to us at the library for certain. And these collections also allow people to even just test out items before making a purchase. So, say you're interested in learning how to play the ukulele, but maybe don't, you know, know that you want to make the investment, you could borrow a ukulele from the library. Dartmouth has been successfully circulating Things. We were one of the first libraries to circulate Hot Spots many years ago. So, we've been successfully doing this for years. We also have kilowatt meters that we circulate from Eversource. But the Hot Spots and the kilowatt meters were the basis of our collection. It's kind of stopped there, and we've been talking about expanding for a while, making it bigger. It's even mentioned in our strategic plan. Many libraries, not only in the immediate area, in fact, the majority of libraries in the immediate area already have extensive Things, but, you know, across the state, across the country, across the world, have been circulating these kinds of things for years, and it's something that patrons nowadays expect from the public library. In fact, NBC Boston was just at the Newton Free Library a few weeks ago. They did a really incredible story. Newton is circulating 800 Things, like medical equipment, home repair tools, like really sophisticated stuff. And I don't know if we'll get to 800 items, but it is fun to think about, and I will highlight that, our items in a minute. But first, why are we doing this now? Timing is everything, and we're very thankful, because, like I mentioned, Library of Things is talked about in our strategic plan, and as luck would have it, this past winter, the Greater New Bedford Regional Refuge Management District reached out about a grant opportunity that would help us fund a Library of Things. As you know, they work closely with our DPW, and they've also been partnering with New Bedford Free Public Library for at least five years now on New Bedford's Library of Things. So, they mentioned the grant through the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection, and in order to receive full grant funding from Mass DEP, the town needs to have a Library of Things. It needs to have at least 30 items, reusable items, that are available to members of the public free of charge, and the items need to come from a minimum of three categories from a list they provided. And that list, categories included technology, equipment, musical instruments, games, and toys. We used their list to make a survey for the public, and we got really great feedback back in February and March from the public on what they would like to see in a collection. We also spoke with librarians throughout the sales network who already have collections. And then we checked out the circulation statistics from items already circulating from other libraries, because we figured if we were getting a grant, we wanted to do the most that we could with that money and really put together a great collection that our community will enjoy. So, now to talk about our items. We're starting out with 35 individual items. For adults, we have 20 items. That includes the Hot Spots and the kilowatt meter kits. Those items are available at both of our libraries, Southworth and North Branch. The other 18, the new items, we will be circulating from North Branch only to start, because, quite frankly, we just have more space at North Branch. We're lacking space at Southworth. We'll use feedback from the community to grow the collection overall, and we will develop a collection for Southworth. We will make room for it if the interest from the community is there. So, as you can see, we have binoculars, a CD player, compact keyboard, gardening tools, karaoke machine, a food dehydrator, pickleball paddles, a singer sewing machine, a yarn winder. We've got a really great list of things for people to choose from. And as you know, I'm sure, we already circulate DVDs, Blu-rays, audiobooks on CD at the library, and we've been hearing from people more and more that they no longer have the players to play those items, so now they'll be able to borrow a Blu-ray player, a DVD player, and a CD player from us, and hopefully, they'll be able to borrow those other pieces of the collection, too, that we already have. Then, for kids and families, we have 15 items. Both libraries have the same exact items to start. And again, based on feedback from the community, we'll grow the collection. But in the initial survey, the results showed that people really wanted educational toys, STEAM toys. So, you'll see, we've got, in addition to beach toys, we've got a fort building kit, leapfrog products, National Geographic products, wooden Tetris puzzles. There's a lot that fits the STEAM categories within this collection, and, like I said, they're at both libraries. So, with anything else, like with anything else we do at the library, rules do apply. Our Board of Library Trustees approved a policy and a waiver in May for the collection. Patrons will need to sign both before borrowing items. They do something similar now for the Hot Spots. They sign a waiver for the Hot Spots, and they also sign a policy for the museum passes we circulate. So, Dartmouth patrons are used to this sort of thing, for sure. They only have to sign once, we make a note in their account. They have to be 18 years or older in order to borrow something from the Things collection, and they need to have a library card in good standing. Some of the rules that, you know, people will be most concerned about are, like, the seven-day loan rule. That could change down the line if we find people are giving us feedback that they'd like the items for 14 days instead of seven, we can easily make that switch. Same thing with the renewals. Maybe, you know, people would like to be able to renew it once if no one's waiting, so these are all things we'll take into consideration. As you know, we don't charge fines on the majority of our items anymore, but we are putting a $5 per day overdue fine on Things. And, you know, hopefully, people will just return them on time, and they won't owe us anything at all, and that would be great. So, I have to thank our Assistant Director, Bethany Vieira. I wish she were here tonight, but she's not here this evening. But she and I together have spent a few months developing and readying this collection. It was way more work than I think either of us anticipated. We did receive great support from staff, and back at the beginning of June, we had an all-day staff meeting, and one of the items on the agenda was Library of Things, so that staff could learn all about what's coming, and they had a chance to play with the Things, and so that was a lot of fun. We are all very excited to get going with this, and we hope that you just can support this new endeavor for the community, and we're looking forward to working with DCTV, too, on promoting it. We've already had that conversation, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Anyone with questions or comments?
Are these brand-new items you purchased?
These are brand-new items we purchased with the grant funding, and we do anticipate, like I said, growing the collection, and we would like to use our state aid funding to grow it with new items. And then maybe down the line, if people have items that they could donate that are, like, in pristine condition, then we could talk about doing that. So, sometimes what people think is in really great pristine condition, like when they donate books, the books aren't necessarily in great condition, so we don't, we didn't want to launch this new collection with, you know, used items.
The items you purchased were based on surveying the need, and you picked...
Right, so we started out, you know, really looking at those results from the survey. We got great feedback from that, and then we then compared that to what we're seeing in terms of circulation statistics from libraries that already have existing collections, because it might sound like a great idea to have a keyboard, but if nobody's going to check out the keyboard, then we wouldn't want to invest in something like that. But we saw that other libraries that do circulate keyboards have great return on investment in terms of circulation.
Did you find a particular library that has had a stupendous success with this program?
The Middleborough Public Library has a fantastic program. They've had theirs, I would say, it's going close to 10 years now, and they just keep adding to it. Matipoiset also has one of the longest-running collections, so the Matipoiset Free Library.
Middleborough is very similar to our town that way, too.
Right, so, it's really, it's an exciting time, because it's, you know, you don't often get to launch something new at the library, so the fact that we're getting to launch this new collection, and we know our patrons are going to other libraries already to borrow things from them, so it's exciting that they'll just be able to borrow it from here in Dartmouth. Yes.
So, what was the grant for? How much money was it?
It was for $2,000. So, $1,000...
Bought a lot of Things for $2,000.
What, we did, we bought a lot of Things for $2,000. Yeah, we were really...
Good, good job.
Really trying to price that, and just be smart with the spending, so we worked really hard on that, so. Yeah, thank you.
Neil?
Hi. Well, the insurance guy in me is going to come out here a little bit. I apologize. Do we, on top of the waiver, do we have, do we have a liability carrier for the saws and the hedge trimmers?
We're not circulating saws and hedge trimmers, so.
The tool, that was the list...
That's, yeah.
That the state provided them of all the ideas.
With ideas for us. I mean, we're, you know, we do have some gardening tools that we're circulating and the singer sewing machine.
So, you're not moving in that direction, I guess, is the question? Okay.
We're not looking to do power tools or anything...
Okay, good.
...heavy-duty like that.
Good choice.
Yeah, good, thank you. And we did that consciously, because when, in fact, I just learned today that the Atleboro Public Library, which they also have an amazing collection, they just added a six-foot-tall axe-throwing game with, and I was like, oh, my gosh, I can't even wrap, I mean, good for them if it works, but I can't even wrap my mind around that, like, the fact that, you know, they, there's a line that's too heavy for staff to carry to the car.
There's a business in Dartmouth that...
That does that, right, which is great. You know, that you can go...
We wouldn't want to take the business away from them.
Yeah, no, right, that's exactly why.
So nice.
Hopefully, pickleball and more will forgive that we're circulating pickleball paddles, but, but, right, I don't want to take away from the business that's, that's doing the axe-throwing. So, no, we tried to be very conservative in terms of what we were adding and really being mindful of not wanting to circulate something that would potentially be harmful. So, there's, there's no power tools coming, or axe-throwing.
Mr. McCall? Having been on the committee that looked for a new director just a few years ago, with you, Dina, coming on board, that was one of the questions that we were asking at that point, because that was an area of expansion that our library hadn't been able to do up until the point that you came on. So, I'm thrilled that we talked about it, and it's coming to life.
You, too.
Having seen libraries of Things in, at other public libraries, I also like the way, I just have to commend you for the way that you have so thoughtfully gone through each item and determined, and I know that when you're going to look at this and you're going to see, okay, how often was this rented? Do we need to buy a second one, or do we not go in that direction? I know that you'll use the same process, and I know Bethany Figurito Vieira, Jackie's daughter, by the way, is just as thorough as mom, so I know that the two of you will be doing that, so I'm excited for this kickoff.
Thank you.
I am going to ask that a letter be drafted from the Select Board in support of this. Gary, if you can write that down, just so that the Library of Trustees know that they're not alone in this endeavor, I'd like us to endorse this project as well.
Thank you very much.
Everyone in favor of that?
Motion to endorse.
Motion to endorse? Seconded? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Mr. Mc...
One other comment. The last couple months, three months, I've had an occasion to use the library more than I have, and I am incredibly impressed with the staff, with the product, with the system, and it was invaluable to me in Houston, and I look forward to using it more.
Wonderful.
Suggestion. I remember way back when, when we proposed building a North Branch, and someone stood up at a town meeting and said, "Why are we building a branch? Nobody uses the library anymore." And that woman, the person got run out of the town meeting, and we have... I would suggest that maybe we could go to another meeting going forward and give the director 15 minutes to tell us about all the services and unique things the library does, because I think it's, you open up a lot of eyes, and maybe then get even more suggestions. And I know I'd love to hear it, because I don't be aware of all the things you do, and the people you have there, maybe you could bring some in with you to talk, because I think, I think you've got a lot to say. It's a positive, such a part, and you've done such a great job in such a short time, so if that's okay with the Board.
I've got it down here. Perhaps a meeting in...
Anytime. We'd be happy to come.
Later this summer or early fall.
We have a lot to boast about, so we'd be...
Also know that you're going to be doing a spotlight with DCTV on this new Library of Things.
We're going to do Library of Things, and we're talking, you know, also with Magnolia about different ways that Magnolia, DCTV, and the library can collaborate, and to really get the word out there, because you're right, we offer so much that I just sometimes think people are not aware. It's not, it's not just books, and even if it were just books, I don't think people are aware of the...
Great, that would be great.
I think it's amazing, every time I'm at either branch, I am not the only patron there. There are plenty.
We hit over 100,000 items checked out since January, so, physical items, not digital items, physical items, so.
We're only six months into the year, right?
Highest community in the network, so, I mean, that's...
In six months, 100,000?
In six months, over 100,000 items. We just hit that, so.
It's a very busy place.
It is.
I do want to give a plug, though, because having just returned from a trip, I had gotten my passport processed through the Southworth Library.
Wonderful.
So, if you just want to do a little plug for people planning on traveling...
Yes, is it, the Southworth Library is a licensed passport agency, so you can come in, even if you just have some questions about the passport process... in, even if you just have some questions about the passport process. Brian Walsh is, takes the lead on doing the passport program at Southworth, but he's always more than happy to answer
They let you back in the country, so I guess it was
Yeah, so it worked.
Done bad.
You got the passport itself, but
I thought it was a one-way trip.
Nice try, you didn't pay enough. Yes. And you can get your picture for the passport taken right down the street at Walgreens and go right back to Brian.
Exactly, right down the street at Walgreens and then head on over. It's a super quick process. And we get such great feedback from people on the passport.
So same-day service?
If you call and make an appointment, because somebody, an agent has to be working. Because we have three licensed agents on staff. And so someone has to be working who can do that for you. But if you call, there's, sometimes you can come right in and do it right away. And if not, you can usually get the appointment, you know, within a few days. And there's evening appointments, Saturday appointments, which separates us from, you know, no disrespect to the post office, but, you know, because you can also go to a post office and get your passport, but you don't get evening or weekend service there. So we're fortunate to offer that.
That's great. I just noticed, and my, well, I didn't notice, my wife told me to go get my passport redone. So I will do that.
So now you know.
Yeah, now I know.
So just give Brian a call, he'll walk you through the process.
I was going to say, suggest to Gary with the employee cookout coming up, maybe the cornhole set in the giant
Ah, maybe we can get those dropped off here.
Maybe a little contest.
That's right.
Other than the axe-throwing.
Yeah.
We don't need the axe-throwing.
Yeah, that's going to be hard to explain why we've lost an employee. No.
Good suggestion.
A giant four in the row, perhaps.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Deena.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate everyone's support. Thank you.
And thank you, trustees, for
Chain side.
for doing this. All right, thank you. Now, really hard to follow up all of that. We have Tim Barber here to talk to us about the sewer and water rates for FY '26.
For the bad news.
Yeah, exactly. We should have started with you.
Good evening.
To you.
I think the, you know, Library of Things is a great, a great idea and a great opportunity. You know, the DPW donated some money through our RD point from recycling programs that we, that we offer. We get recycling points from the state, which is, turns around in money and we can use that for other programs, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So last year, we presented along with Weston and Sampson around this time. We looked at a, a five-year rate structure for water and sewer rates, along with a 10-year capital improvement plan for water and sewer, including a lot of large projects. Like we currently have a $2.6 million project, improvement project going on at our 579 water treatment facility. And we have a number of projects outlined in our capital plan. You know, with, you know, the increases every year in salaries, minimum, minimally about 3% at, and with the CPI, you know, for the last five years being in between 3% and 8%. You know, just a nominal increase in rates basically allows you to operate. But we're looking to, you know, fund our operating budget, fund our capital improvement projects, and also target a goal of 15% retained earnings that we can use for all the future capital projects. And looking down the road on the horizon, there's a lot of, a number of large development projects with, with high demands for water and sewer usage in the city, which is going to, it's going to, you know, expedite the need for, for these capital improvements a lot quicker, once these, these projects come online with the amount of water and the amount of sewer demand that they require. So last year, the Board of Public Works approved an option, option two in our presentation was a, for the next five years, for our water rate of 7.5% increase. And for our sewer rates, option three was eight, an 8.5% increase. And the Board of Public Works again approved those same rates, which was outlined in our five-year rate plan. And along with that, any New Bedford water rates were approved at 8.5%, which the city of New Bedford had approved their rate increases earlier in the year for, to start July 1st with an 8.5% increase in water and a 3% increase in sewer. So those, those rates will be passed along to those account users that use New Bedford water and sewer, as well as the water that we purchase from the city of New Bedford. If you look at an average, an average usage of about 5,600 cubic feet of water and with an average bill of about $277, this should increase the bill about $20 per year or about $120, $121 for the, for the next five years with these increases. The more water you use, the more, you know, the higher the bill. But that's an average, an average number. Any questions?
That's the average on what, Tim, the water bill?
Average, on the average usage, so the average water and sewer bill.
Water and sewer?
Say those numbers again.
Water and sewer bill, and then the sewer bill would be
Why don't you go over those numbers once more?
What's that?
Go over those numbers again.
Yeah, so an average water bill of $277 and an average sewer bill of $262.
Okay.
The, the water increase should, it should increase about $20 per year or $121 over the next five years. And with the sewer bill, it should increase about $22 per year and $132 over the next five years. Like I said, that, if, you know, if you use more than that, the increase would be a little higher. If you use less than that, the increase will be lower.
So this is the proposal in our, the packet that you provided us, which was the presentation from last year.
Yes.
Water rate, option two, FY '20 '26 is the 7.5, one, two, three, four, five. We're talking about
5.8.
Well, that's
Water is Water?
Water is two.
I have 7.5?
Gotcha, okay, all right, go ahead.
Across the top?
Right.
Option two on the water and option three
And then option three on the sewer, which is page
Nine.
16 in our handout. Now, I know the DPW, I'm just going to say for the record, got a very bad rap a couple years ago because all of a sudden we had this huge increase. But there hadn't been one for a number of years. And I feel like I need to remind people of that over and over again when we discuss this because we got away as taxpayers on the cheap for a number of years.
We did. And like I explained, that, you know, every year, there is an increase in salaries of an average of 3%. And the CPI, you know, may range from 2%, you know, normally 2% to 4%, which has been higher in the last five years. So just, you know, you at least need to increase by, by those percentages or you, you're falling behind.
Mm-hmm. So the CPI being the Consumer Product Index, 2% to 5%.
Yeah.
So what I see here is this is, takes us to do the work that we do on a day-to-day basis. But we all know that we also have some big projects. And we are coming now out of AWPer funding days, which we funded a number, in fact, DPW got the most funding of any department with AWPer funds. And so my concern is there is so much work to be done. That pool has dried up. Concern about what we hear at the federal level about grants drying up there. I know our list hasn't dried up.
It has not.
And I know that our list, as you said, we have a number of, of big developments looking at Dartmouth. And we've been talking about what we need, whether it's what's in the street, the connections, the, we spoke recently to the fire departments who talked about what, what they need for water supplies for, to, you know, in the off-chance that there is a fire, what they need to do. We're really up against it. So I, I thank you for realistic in, to our taxpayers about the increases. But I know that we're looking at some serious funding that we're going to need. And I know you have a laundry list of things. You know, every person that drives wants you to fix every road. Not possible. And I do know that those of us that use the sewer treatment plant, every time we flush, we want it to go away. And having toured the sewer treatment plant, I know you're doing the best you can with a plant that was built in 1973 and has been band-aided as we go. So in looking at all of that, what's on the horizon for Dartmouth in need?
Well, for wastewater, obviously, we need to work on an updated comprehensive wastewater management plan and, which will lead to recommendations for upgrades in the, in the wastewater treatment facility and any collection system upgrades, whether it's extensions or replacements or, and look at other, areas of Dartmouth that need sewer. And there's also, you know, the possibility of, of regulations, you know, coming from DEP, which, which are in, in effect down Cape Cod. They might come back this way and we may need to, you know, upgrade sooner. So, you know, the, speaking to our consultants as well as our, you know, our staff, our operational staff at the wastewater treatment facility, the superintendent over there, they've done a great job maintaining that facility and keeping it running and not exceeding any limits, any, any MCLs. But, you know, the, with, with the, the additional flows coming down the pipeline, literally, we're looking at hitting an 80% mark, which, which triggers some, some regulatory impacts from, you know, from DEP, where they will require us to, to move towards an upgrade sooner than later. So, so that's on the horizon for the wastewater. Amongst other projects, you know, and when you look at increases, I said, you know, three, between 3% and 8%, you know, increases per year. But, you know, we just had a project that we quoted six months ago. We just renewed the quote today and it went up and increased by 16%. So, so there's no, you know, there's no consistency with these increases. So, and a lot of these projects are, you know, you know, are increasing. So, so we continue to, you know, to try to fund these projects. And we're going to look at borrowing for, to complete some of these projects. On the water side, we have some, you know, we have some improvements at each of our treatment facilities to improve water quality and resiliency, you know, through, you know, some of these large storms that, that impact our wells and, and the drought conditions. So, you know, we, although we have redundancy through the city of New Bedford, you know, we want to increase the quality and the, and the resiliency through all of our plants. So that's some of our plans moving forward. So currently, we're working on the 579 Westport Road Treatment Facility. And then we have our Chase Road Facilities that we have to focus on after that. And that'll, you know, that'll bring back some, some wells that have been offline for a number of years due to storm issues and allow us to pump some more water and supply more water and purchase a little less from the city. But, but as, as the demand increases and we bring on a lot of these large developments, that, you know, we're going to, we will need to purchase more water.
Which is a concern.
To supplement our, our supply.
Speaking of that, how are we doing with the conversation with Fall River about their water?
Well
So they've extended the water, it's about 2,100 feet from the Dartmouth line. They, as, as with New Bedford, they have plenty of water as well. Just
But they want to charge us.
Well, yes, they want to charge, just like New Bedford. But they can't, right now, Fall River cannot feed us water because the, they don't have a, a line that comes to us. But when we met with Representative Markey, Senator Montigny, they are going to be talking to Representative Roderick from Westport about what would it, what would it take to get that to happen. Fall River is actually looking to sell water.
Yeah.
So we do think if nothing else, our look may help New Bedford rethink the price that they want to sell it to us. But we have to have another option because right now we're beholden to them.
Exactly.
And it's, so we hope that going, that it will be something that is pursued
It's not a good position to be in.
Us. It's not a good position for us. No, no.
And I don't like operating that way.
I know that we, our bond rating is excellent. So to look at borrowing for these projects, you know, as you said, we just did a six-month and it's 16% more. We can't wait. Every day we're waiting, every month we're waiting on determining what should, we should do. We're going to have to borrow that much more money. So I do think, and I know you'll be working with the board to talk about what do we need to do. But, you know, Dartmouth Pride is all about those glossy things that people see. But the DPW is all about the workings, the inner workings.
We do need water to keep them shiny.
Yes, we do. Yes, we do. And we want clean water. So that is, we've really got to pay attention. And so I know, this is sort of, you know, another PSA, having taken a tour of the facility, please watch what you, what you flush. Do not flush flushable wipes. They are not flushable. Also, having seen what is pulled out on a daily basis, anything from, you know, scrunchies to dentures, eyeglasses, please be mindful.
Toys.
Toys, plastic toys. They all are gunking up the works. And just another reminder that DPW is in a bit of a conundrum. Every low-flow
F fixture.
F fixture, toilet, shower, tub fixtures that we put in, low-flow fixtures do not help with solid waste. So in the process of doing this, the process has to add water through the wastewater so we can move things along through the pipes. So remember that. While we're doing better for the environment, we're, it's a, it's a conundrum when it actually gets to
Yeah, but there's no, there's no choice in that.
No, there is no choice.
Federal regulations
Right.
Well, we can, we conserve water.
Right.
Right, which is, which is a plus on that side, you know. But it, it definitely affects the sewer collection and treatment. You know, it adds, adds solids, adds, adds concentration and adds, adds demand for biochemical oxygen demand. And what you, you were talking about the, the, everything that comes out of the grit screening?
Mm-hmm.
Toys and dentures. And that's the project that we're working on that went up, increased by 16%.
I also know through, when we've met with Greater New Bedford Refuge, there's another R, Management District.
Regional, yeah.
Regional of Refuge Management District. They've also commended Dartmouth of how well we've done with the recycling program, both with our paper and our plastics, which is wonderful, which means less of that is going into our landfill.
We reduced, when we started the program, we reduced solid waste disposal by about 40%. And we've maintained that through the years.
During COVID, I was one of the people that also went out to the facility and purchased a composting barrel. And I've been composting and, and using that in my garden. But tell us a little bit about the kitchen composter that is available to us because keeping all of that out of But tell us a little bit about the kitchen composter that is available to us because keeping all of that out of the system. And I really am thinking about those folks that have, um, garbage disposals, which are wonderful. You put your stuff in and it goes away. But those things do not, um, liquefy. They're more another solid going out into our system. So tell us a little bit about the kitchen waste collection program.
I as well have a.
I'm sorry that this wasn't on, but I just feel that we have this opportunity.
I as well have a backyard, backyard composter and it, you know, it's great and it takes a lot out of the, out of the disposal, out of the, the trash, solid waste. So we also, working with the district, uh, before the kitchen waste composter came onboard, we also started our, uh, our compost or food waste drop-off at the transfer station. So residents are, that are in the SMART program are able to use the transfer station, uh, free of charge as long as they're in the program to dispose of food waste, uh, which would normally be thrown away in the trash, causing more tonnage and, and more, more waste to, to the landfill. So going further with that, um, Black Earth Compost that we work with has also started a, a curbside pickup of, of food waste. So if you, if you don't have time to bring the food waste to the transfer station, you can, you can contract with, with Black Earth Compost and, and they'll come curbside and pick it up. They'll set the schedule with you and the cost.
They provide a container of some sort?
They do, yes. Yep. They'll provide we, with a, with a countertop container and then a sealed container. Um, and then we have the food waste dehydrator, which is, um, you can purchase that. Um, and I think there's currently some incentives. You can purchase that through the district and it, it's, it's typically a countertop device and it takes anything. It takes bones, meats, every, every product and it dehydrates it to basically a powder. That can be added, it's not considered compost, but it can be added to your, your compost for gardens and, and such. Or thrown away in the trash, um, at, at a lot less percentage. The backyard compost, uh, bins, you can only use specific items in there. You don't want to throw any meats or dairy products or, or anything. But, but like eggshells and coffee grounds, you know, are great to compost in those bins. They, when you use a, um, a garbage disposal, a sink garbage disposal, a lot of those items like eggshells and, and coffee grounds are abrasives. So they, they, they had solids that are going down the pipe and, and like we mentioned, water-saving fixtures add less water. So you have more solids, more concentration, more BOD and more abrasive. So to the, to all of our pump stations, all the impellers and it, it, it requires more maintenance. So sometimes it, it requires declogging or replacing of a lot of the impellers and, and earlier on because of the, the use of, of garbage disposals. So, so if you can compa-, compost the food or, or dehydrate it or bring it to the transfer station, it's much better off.
So do you have that information on the DPW website?
Yes, and, and the district.
Gary, do we have it on our website? I think we should. The more people know about it, the better. Thank you.
It is certainly, you know, to say we inherit the earth from our children. Uh, it, it behooves all of us to do this. But saying that, my grandparents' house, I remember very vividly, um, if we misbehaved for Vival, she would give us the pail to take outside and we'd have to step on the lid, the metal lid. The smell would come out, dump the little pail in, run fast as heck back to the outside, put the faucet, rinse it out, take the pail back into Vival. And, um, they were ahead of their time.
They were, and they used that for, for Vival's garden.
Yes, yes. And we, there was a, a man that came, um, I don't remember how often, but would come and pick it up. But I very much remember, um, I think my sister had to do it more often than I did, but just saying. So thank you for that PSA. Because I want people to know, while they're, we're, oh, gosh, another increase. Think of all the things that we have to do with this. Chris?
Yeah. So getting back to the, uh, water and sewer rate, Tim. This has got a 10-year capital plan, high priority capital work.
Yes.
Included in these numbers, right? So this includes the, the borrowing mechanisms?
It does. So, so anything over, I think it was 400,000, we, we pushed it towards a borrowing program and then carried it over a minimum of 20 years.
Okay. Uh, let me see. So we've got 7.5% up until 20
nine.
On the, on the, on the water, right? And then we're at 8.5% increases. Just, I want people to be aware of, of, you know, what, what this projection includes. 8.5% increases on the sewer up until 2030. And then, and that drops down. So I would assume that some of the debt will be relieved at that point, right? So New Bedford's up 16%. Any idea what Fall River did, uh, for July 1st on that water rate?
I'm not sure.
They, I think they're around 4%.
Is it four?
So Fall River, at four?
They were at a, they were at a higher rate than they were brought, let's go to the council for approval. The council told them to go back and redo the budget. So they actually reduced the rate a little more. I can confirm the rate if you'd like.
All right. So overall, do we know what the Fall River rate is? I mean, there's no sense chasing this up a tree if we're not, you know, if it doesn't make any sense right out of the gate, right? So, and.
I know it's cheaper than New Bedford. What it is, I think we will find that out.
All right. So, so ultimately, you know, the, the option to have, uh, access to Fall River at, at an absolute minimum should give us a little bit more of a competitive stance against our current, our current contract. Right now, last year, what did we do with them? A million bucks, New Bedford, a million two?
Last year, about 1.4.
1.4. All right. That is not good. Um, so where the, you mentioned the two wells. Where are we on the wells? I, I know I've been driving you guys crazy about trying to get these things up and running. What's the issue with the wells? Why aren't they running?
So we have two wells that were, um, contaminated during a large storm and, and with an E. coli bacteria. So.
What story, what year was that? Do you remember?
It was, it was probably 2020.
All right. So that's five years ago.
Yes. So with that, um, years ago, you could sanitize the wells and bring them back online, test them. And, and once they, they tested clean, you could, you could, uh, supply, you can turn them back on. Well, with the Water Management Act permit, you can no longer do that unless you have a, what's called a four-log system, which is a contact pipe system that increases the length of time that the, the treatment is in contact with the water to, to ensure, um, a safe supply of water. So that's what we're working on now at our 579, uh, O. Westport Road Treatment Plant. So once we get that four-log in place, um, with some other, you know, we, we also have a pump house and a, a clear well that we're installing. And once that's all online, then we'll be able to, to re-sample those wells and move forward with turning, turning them back online.
All right. So 579, so we're using a lot of the Opera money to get that, that extra line in so we can, we can treat more effectively, right? Uh, so that's one of two wells or both wells?
Both wells.
Both wells. Okay. So what, what's the anticipated, uh, upstart for both wells?
Uh, you're looking for time-wise?
Yeah.
Timeline? Um, so let's see. We're hoping by the end of the year or early spring.
End of the year, first quarter of '26? Is that what you're saying?
Okay. Worst case, second quarter.
All right. And then as far as, uh, access to Fall River, um, somebody said 2,100. I don't know what that means.
It's about 2,100 feet, about a half a mile.
Yeah, it's about a half a mile from the, uh.
From, from which, which?
So if you're familiar with Route 6.
Yeah.
It's around the Olympia Pizza, uh, area, which is close to Amaral's Bus, not too far from Amaral's Bus. So it's not that far of a stretch to get into the, the lines, uh, to get it tied in.
Is, is there not an access point further north?
To Fall River?
To Fall River? No.
Because the way, the way Route 6 goes this way, you go by Highland Avenue.
Yeah.
Highland Avenue starts going off a little bit to the right.
Yeah.
So, and Route 6 kind of goes a little bit. So the closest part, of course, would be Amaral's because it would get to Highland Avenue. And it would get to.
Get right to, right to.
Right.
Right to Route 6 if there's a connection point there.
Okay. And, and what's it going to take from, uh, so it's 2,100 to our connection, or 2,100 to the border?
To the border.
To the border. So, so what do we got on our side?
It's close, which is not far from the, the existing water lines.
All right. What, what's not far?
Our, our water main, in front of Lincoln Park.
What's that?
We're, our front, our water main ends in front of Lincoln Park.
All right. That's not bad.
Yeah.
I figured.
There's a loop that runs north and south across Route 6 to supply water to both sides.
Okay. Let me see. Uh, the averages, that was, that was the other thing. Um.
So Mr. O'Neill, to answer your question, as far as the rate, uh, for right now is $4.36. $4.36, $4.36 per one cubic feet. That's on the water side. And on the sewer is $8.11 per cubic feet on the sewer side. They had, uh, no increase from the FY '25 rates.
Okay.
So it stayed the same.
Gotcha. And what was the number again, Gary? Sorry, four?
Uh, $4.36 per 100 cubic feet and then $8.11 per, uh, 100 cubic feet.
So that's 12. So it's 48, say?
Yeah.
If, if, if we're at 5 eighths, right? So 48 versus 54 and a half. That's not bad. Um, okay. And, and when, when you guys project the, uh, the borrowing, uh, more so probably, I mean, we've got the Opera money and with, you know, the projects. I, I just don't know what projects are built into the 10-year plan. But, um, where do you get the money? Where do you get the money for, uh, the water resource has a, has a fund, right? And that's a pretty low, uh, interest rate.
Yes.
I would assume. What, what about the sewer? We're on our own, correct? Same thing?
Yep.
Okay. All right.
So that's our, our funding, yeah.
So the Enterprise Fund can basically engage in that, uh, same type of program with sewer?
Yes. Yep. And, uh, you know, our target goal is to, to, to keep our retained earnings at 15% so we can, so we can keep on the, the smaller, you know, under $400,000 projects.
Okay. And last question, the, um, if we're looking at the end of, uh, this year, first quarter of '26, for the wells being up and running, with the new equipment, barring any issues, right, that always come up, how, how do you think that'll affect what we're drawing down from New Bedford or Fall River down, down there?
So it'll, it'll allow us to pump more water than we're currently pumping. So.
Yeah.
It'll mean less and it'll be more kind of resiliency throughout the system.
Yeah.
With, one with the four-log and then if we have another, if we have a failure elsewhere and, you know, we have that, those other wells online.
So other than the backup though, you know, if, if everything were running and we're borrowing, uh, we're, we're bringing in 1.4 million from New Bedford. Uh, and that's dollars, right? That's not, uh, uh, cubic feet.
Oh, that's dollars.
That's dollars.
Right.
Uh, yeah, I'm not going to hold you to anything, but what kind of number should we anticipate, uh, to save from New Bedford once those wells are up and running?
I, I'd like to be closer, you know, to the 1.2 or a million, 1 million.
We'd still need, we'd still need that kind of investment in New Bedford's water system even after both wells are up and running.
Most likely, yeah.
Wow, that's disappointing.
And it depends on, on, on river levels and drought conditions where, you know, so currently with the, with the river levels down, we had to shut off other wells, which we can't turn back on until the river levels come back. And, uh, you know, currently we're, we're out of the drought. We just came out of the drought, you know, in the beginning of June, um, from last year. And, uh, you know, if, you know, if we don't get a lot of rain, we'll go back into a drought and have more restriction. So that, that all plays into how much water that we can pump.
So it's more, it's more important now, um, even with the wells coming up, that we investigate in alternate, in alternate? Because that could have a significant impact on our negotiated, uh, negotiation with, uh, New Bedford. So thank you, Tim.
And the irony is, in the north end of our town, sits a reservoir of water in Dartmouth owned by New Bedford.
And water rights to Fall River.
So.
And then we have the, the pond too.
Yeah.
That Fall River owns, that we own the water, I'm sure.
Mr. Tadlam?
Uh, yeah, I just want to make a comment on, uh, long-range planning for the fall. Our goal, we have three workshops coming, workshops coming and, uh, the goal is in, uh, for all the categories, including DPW, for instance, is to try to project the costs while we're waiting for these, uh, plans to be constructed, what we need, what it's going to be. We're going to try to project the cost of 50 million, whatever that might be, an estimate. And then try to also then say what it may, how that will affect, for instance, the Enterprise Funds when it comes to the DPW projects. So that we're going to try to start that process of guiding our way to get some projections. People don't care whether the money's coming from the, after the Enterprise Fund cost or it's going to be a, a bond, a, um, a, a, um,
Borrowed.
Borrowing, whatever it is, it's still going to cost our residents. So, uh, that's the goal, uh, to start that process of being more informative. Uh, because we're waiting now for these DPW projects to be, uh, calculated and projected and recommended. And we're in that process now.
Correct.
So that, uh, we don't want to make surprises. So that as we keep going, uh, we're going to try to keep projecting these costs with a timetable. Whether it be for schools, uh, whether it be for a, a water, a sewer treatment plant, uh, or any of these other projects we've listed on our long-range planning. So, uh, the idea is to keep that information flowing and, and then, uh, and then massage it and change it as we go forward to more specific information. Fair to say in our end, Tim?
Absolutely fair.
And we have those dates projected. Uh, people know where they'll be in September. And we hope that people have some interest and, uh, come and get along. Cause the questions you raised, Mrs. Brooks, are specific what people want to know and need to know. And our goal is to keep that information coming. Thank you, Mrs. Brooks.
Sure. Do you happen to know when the dates are, Mr. Tadlam?
Yes.
I know there's one specific for DPW.
Yeah. I can give it to you right now.
Okay. So we have three of these long, just to remind folks, we have three meetings scheduled in September for long-range planning. Each one is at a different location and each one is on a different topic.
September 9th is a Tuesday. Uh, that's the, for the community projects, which are, uh, not the DPW. That's, uh, at 6 o'clock at the COA. Uh, that's September 9. September 17th is a Wednesday. That's for the schools, uh, long-range planning for schools at the middle school, 6:00 PM on September 17th, as I said. And September 25th, which is a Thursday, DPW, Tim will be on the hot, uh, hot box for that one. That'll be at the North Branch Library, September 25th at 6:00 PM. 9th, 17th, and 25th.
Tell all your friends about it because, um, there are some very high priority needs that, um, will be presented to all of us. And we need to know, what are we going to do down the road? So.
Chevy, for you.
Yes, dear.
Off the subject.
Sorry. Mr. O'Neill.
I, I'm just curious what your opinion of, of this, uh, report was, Tim. The Town of Dartmouth syruphead study from July of '24, um, first of all, let me know if you had a chance to review it. They did an estimate of residential growth, uh, low, medium, and, uh, high growth, with high being at around 2,194 new dwelling units. Did you get a chance to see it? I don't know if you.
I did.
What'd you think? I mean, were you, were you taken aback? Were you like, okay, we could handle this?
Well, I, I, I wasn't completely taken back. Um, and, and I knew we had some, some large housing projects being proposed even back a year ago. And, you know, just, just the housing projects are about a, a, a thousand, 1,200 units. So that's, that's not, it's not far from.
Yeah.
What I think is, 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 you know, proposed. But we also, you know, we also want to look at where, you know, where these, the projections are going to be located to, to see if there is availability for the utilities in those areas, you know? So I think, I think moving with, with the planning, um, for, for zoning some of these large development areas, um, you know, we could better, we can better plan for, for our utility designs to, to supply those, you know?
And the, uh, the last question I had was. And the, uh, the last question I had was on, um, uh, let me see. Oh, the efficiency study, uh, did we get it back from, we had the consultant, or somebody was working on the efficiency study?
Yes, that was also, uh, Weston Sampson, a- along with the Abrahams Group.
Okay.
So they're working on, uh, they had a, a, a number of interviews, and they, they had reported on their in, interviews for the staffing, but they, they hadn't compiled the full report, so we're waiting on the full report.
Okay, thank you.
Ben Scher.
Yes, Mr. McDonald.
Got a couple of, uh, a couple of things here, Tim. What's the update on the cellular system for reading the meters?
So the, the cellular system is, is about, we're, we have about two hundred units left to install, but, um, we were planning on July first for a quarterly, to start our quarterly billing, um, where our, the utility billing clerk had resigned, um, so we, so we're working on hiring a new utility billing clerk, um, get that person trained as soon as possible so we can move forward with the quarterly billing.
That was my next question, quarterly billing, so we'll, we're probably, because as you, I mean, we know, all of us who have water bills get it half a year, so I know, getting, with these increases, getting that bill half a year is going to be a little bit of a shock, but quarterly, at least we'll be able to. Slow it up a little bit and, and see, but it will also help us with, um, you know, leak determination, um, so, the other question that I have, and I know it's been brought up, where, you know, staff has gone out to read meters and there's been a zero read on the meter, even on the commercial end, how is the department handling those zero reads, and whether they're investigating whether it's, it's a faulty equipment, or it was tampered with, and if it was tampered with, how are they determining to go back and dealing with it?
So, one, if it's a fault, if, if it's a faulty, uh, device, or, or if it was programmed incorrectly, uh, we will, we will go back and, and bill them, uh, based on their average use. If it's, if it's considered a tamper, then, then there's fines and enforcement with tampering with the meter.
All right, so let me add, so part of the, part of that would be when the, when the reads are sent to the billing clerk, um, it's up to that billing clerk to make the notification to you guys that, hey, I got a zero read here, you know, we need to have that checked out, so that's, that's part of the training that needs to be done.
Absolutely.
I know it was kind of a little bit lacking here and there, um, but it, that's something that's going to be done. The other thing, too, is, um, social media is, has been yin and yang for everybody, especially municipalities, and when you talk about Dartmouth water, you talk about potability, whether it's drinkable or not. When was the last time the town was notified of a violation, um, in the water system? If I remember correctly.
It was a couple of years ago.
Twenty-twenty-two?
Yeah, twenty-twenty-two.
Okay.
Yep.
So, in essence, the town has not had a violation in, in, in the water system, so that, which tells me that the reporting agencies, the state and the feds, say that our water is drinkable and usable, um, and if I'm, if I remember correctly, the last violation we had was off of Reed Road, and it had to do with a dead end, um, a dead-end line, where I guess the sediment had built up, um, but now you guys are doing flushing.
Yes.
And we have the loop now from Reed Road to Fontz Connor Road, which eliminates any dead ends, correct?
Yes, yes.
All right, so.
And the more connections, and the more connections to that loop create more of a draw in moving that water.
So in essence, then, the town has gone three years without a standing violation from, uh, the feds or from the state of Massachusetts?
Yes.
Okay, just wanted to make clear that.
Make it known.
The card that came in the mail, though, speaking of social media.
Yes.
I guess people were having difficulty with the QR code?
It works now.
It works now?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I worked with, we, we sent a message to the company, um, and, you know, within a couple hours, it was working.
I think the cards went out before the system was active.
Yeah, and so it brings you, so the QR code brings you to the link that you click on, and, and it, and it, and it seems to work, it worked for me.
Excellent, so try it again.
I haven't heard of any complaints since that day.
Try it again, if you didn't, if it didn't work for you.
And that's one of the things, that's one of the things about social media, as soon as I saw it on, I contacted Tim, and I said, hey, Tim, need the card, so it works.
Excellent.
Good, bad, or ugly, it works.
Technology, you know?
Yep.
Can't live with it, can't live without it. Anyone else? All right.
Thank you, Tim.
Thank you, Tim.
And thank you, Mr. LaBelle, for just sitting there, supporting. Don't have to apologize, trust me.
You're here. All right, next we have the via, uh, town. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm going to go back up. To an item we had earlier on our agenda. Because we have someone in the audience that is here, who, um, has informed us of their retirement, and while we wanted to vote and say we're not accepting it, we also found out that we can't say that, it's not gonna show up, whether we do or don't. So I have a citation, um, be it known that the Dartmouth Select Board hereby extends its congratulations to Sandra Goslin, in recognition of unwavering dedication to the town and the animal control department over the past thirty-one years, including twenty-one, uh, twenty-nine years as an animal control officer. The care and humane treatment of Dartmouth's animal population have always been a top priority, as shown by your initiatives to raise awareness and funds for spray and neuter programs, and be it further known that the Dartmouth Select Board extends its best wishes for continued success in your retirement. So Sandra Goslin, can we have you come up?
Okay. Thank you very much, I'd like to say it was an easy thirty years, but it was not.
No.
Um, the beginning was very tough, but I think we've got a pretty darn good animal control department, um, and I hope it continues, and I hope you all give the other animal control officers the support that they need, 'cause they really do need that in order to make this job work.
And the number of, of calls, um, for, um, wild animals, uh, hearing recently that, twelve deer per square acre.
We do have a lot of deer.
Is doable, and in Dartmouth, we have, I believe it was sixty-four deer.
Yeah.
Per acre, we're clearly.
Yeah, I know.
Are above, um, and anyone that is trying to grow anything, uh, that the deer like, the deer get to it first.
My hostas are all gone on my, one side of my house.
John knows this.
Yeah, so, we have the wild animals that you are out there for, should something be found in the street.
Yes.
You're called, and I know, in, um, my own experience, when I've called, uh, before school starts, and I don't want the kids to see something, that you've come right out, so I thank you for that, or, or dismissal, um, having been a pet owner of an escapee prior to its death, um.
There's a lot in Dartmouth.
There's a lot.
Dartmouth does a lot, you know, you, anywhere from wildlife to cats and dogs, to livestock, um, you know? Loose cows are probably my favorite, you know, 'cause I'm used to them, you know, I mean, I can, I can handle the livestock, you know? Although my, my trusty assistant had to learn how to handle a horse one time, walking down the road in the middle of the night, uh, you know, that was her first experience, and, and.
Welcome.
It's not easy, you know, you know, but, you know, I mean, I think there, it's a good group of people that I work with, so hopefully that will continue.
But for your, um, thirty-one years, I have to say, you've done a commendable job, a job everyone thinks they have an opinion on, um, and you've had to do what you need to do to protect the community.
Never judge anybody until you stand in their shoes, and that's what I tell everybody.
Absolutely.
You don't know, it doesn't matter which animal control department you deal with, or the animal shelter, if you have not been in those shoes, you have no idea what it's like.
You have big boots to fill for us.
They have to, they have to really love the animals, and I, and I gotta say, you know, my first love is the animals, you know, although I have to, you know, be considerate of the residents, my first experience is, let me take care of that animal, you know, and that's, that's what you gotta have, but you gotta, you gotta have a little bit of common sense, you gotta be able, not everybody liked me, but I think most people respected me for what I did for the thirty years.
I agree, I, I, I believe you earned respect.
I thank you, thank you.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
All right, you gotta come on up.
Congratulations, thank you for your service.
Yes, congratulations.
Thank you.
They got a pause? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Groundhog, just, all my hostages, is it raining?
Enjoy.
Rain or fog.
Too, enjoy. All right, now we will move to the.
Nice job, Mrs. Brooks.
Thank you, the town vehicle policy. Mr. McDonald.
Yep.
Um, having had more time to read through it, um, one of the things that came to me is that we have, um, a number of posi, uh, yeah, positions listed that we felt should be, um, should have the, uh, use of a vehicle, um, at their disposal because of the nature of their job, however, I have been getting a little bit of feedback from, um, departments and, um, information on, uh, I guess, I guess it's, um, tax information, and the state, the state only recommends, um, emergency personnel, so I do want us to, um, move forward in this, but I do want to, uh, give the, um, town administrator an opportunity to speak to departments and assess whether or not, um, this list is, um, inclusive?
Well, the id, the idea, the idea was drawn from, um, approximately ten, ten policies throughout the Commonwealth, including, um, something from, um, the MMA, and also in regards to the state and their guidelines in developing the policy, so what you're looking at really is, is the requirements for the town to have the policy, who can use the, you know, who it has to be, and if it's assigned to a, a person, um, that they follow the IRS guidelines, um, for, um, for that, but it also takes into consideration the reimbursement of a private vehicle, uh, being used for work-related vehicles, um, you know, for travel expenses and whatnot, but what's really, what you're looking at is the assignment of municipal vehicles, and what this is, is that, this is for at least an acknowledgement of who should have a vehicle available to them twenty-four hours, and that would be people that are responsible for infrastructure, um, so it would be the director of public works would have a vehicle available to him twenty-four hours, the superintendent and the assistant superintendent of infrastructure, um, because generally, um, right now, if something should happen, say there's a water main break, um, one of these guys, Paul Pacico or Derek, um, Derek Martin, they leave their home at night and travel to that, uh, work site that needs to be done, um, the park supervisor, um, is also somebody who should have a vehicle to them, because, um, they lock up the beaches, uh, at night, um, the wastewater, the water and wastewater supervisor, again, another one with the emergency vehicles, especially if something happens, um, and of course, the animal control officer, um, but this does not, uh, negate the fact that, um, say, the building commissioner needs to have a vehicle when they drive around doing inspections, because it's here, that says any other vehicle assigned is noted may be granted with authorization from the town administrator and our select board, so what we're trying to do is, we're trying to make sure that the vehicles in town, um, are, number one, registered, uh, we have a list of them, um, we know what they're for, and, and who's responsible for them, and, and, I mean, this can be, you know.
So this, this policy while being, um, inclusive of all town vehicles.
Right, and.
But this specifies the twenty-four hour.
Right, this specifies the twenty-four hours, but what this also doesn't do is, this does not supersede or negate the police policy on vehicles, that's separate, and it's stated on, in the policy that it does not, um, so, because the police have their own policy, and there's some, actually, there's some pretty good, um, information and, and reasoning for some of the vehicles, like, one of the vehicles is that if you've been a police officer in town for ten years and you live in town, uh, you can take a vehicle home, um, and seeing these police vehicles throughout the neighborhoods, um, might have a tendency to kinda keep people saying, oh, wait a minute, there's a cop in my neighborhood, I'm not gonna do something stupid, well.
You'd hope.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, so, I mean, the thing is, is that right now, we have no policy on vehicle use in this town.
Correct.
And, um, one of the things that wanna try to do over, over the time is, is to, you know, revamp our policies, upgrade our policies to, to reflect a, a better, um, consideration, and, and, you know, some of these, um, and Gary can speak to it, um, when you, when you have a vehicle, um, available for your use, you have, it's gotta be reported, there's, there's a, there's a reporting mechanism with the IRS that you have to follow, and if the town doesn't follow that, the town could be liable and fined by the IRS, so, I mean, this, this is, this is something that I, I, I came up with, I sent it to, um, Chris Fattali, Chris Fattali was working on his, this is a combination of both of us, this has been reviewed by town council, um, and it's here for our adoption, and plus the fact that it also kinda tells, lays out if there's an accident in a town vehicle, what the employee driving should be doing, you know, number one, it tells them, don't, don't take it upon yourself to, you know, give out information, just do what you need to do, you obtain information, you give information, you report it, you make it known to your department head, and that way, everything is, 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 is there, um, this isn't meant to be, um, draconian, it's meant to be fluid, and it's meant to be, you know, changed over as time, as time goes.
I, I found it to be very comprehensive, Mr. Tattelbaum, did you have?
I, I saw one typo, minor typo.
Oh, why don't you tell us where it is?
At the very end, um, under, um, okay, where'd it go? Sorry.
It's okay.
I'll get, go ahead.
Why don't I ask?
Oh, there it is, uh, under discipline, the very end, X, number ten, discipline, regulatory slash statutory, I believe that should not be an S, I think, regulatory slash statutory references, down at the very bottom.
Oh.
That should not be plural, yes?
Oh, regulatory and the statutorys, so the S should be removed, do you see that?
Sounds like an Italian word. Sounds like an Italian word.
Go to the last page.
Tonolone or totoline.
Give you some meatballs of statutorys.
Keep going.
Thank you. That's it for me.
Hang on one second. Let's just get rid of that S. Mr. Mickelson?
I'm all set with it.
You're all set? Mr. O'Neill?
The...
From the insurance man.
No, I'm not gonna bring any of that up.
Okay, okay. Just checking.
The limits aren't low, though.
Okay.
But if a word replacement can be done for town manager versus town administrator, I think you wanna switch those out?
It's quite possible that manager popped up here and there.
I find one on page eight.
Page seven has a couple of them. So, a simple word search and replacement.
Can you note that, Gary?
So, I'll just, yeah, anywhere that's town manager.
Just search it where it says manager. Make sure it says administrator. The only other suggestion I have is on the vehicle use policy acknowledgement that we have this also endorsed by their supervisor. So they've read it, but then the supervisor. And then I didn't know if we should have something on here that assigns them a specific car. So that if, because it's in here, no eating, no smoking. So I want to know, when I'm the next person to use the car, who left it a mess? So how can we...
We can add...
Can I add that?
Yeah.
But I think on here...
A log of, we should probably start talking about a log after that.
A log. And then I know that we've shared the, it's very specific in here, so this is gonna have to go over with department heads because they need to go over this with everyone. Because it's entirely possible that within a department, they use a town vehicle. But they need to know what they can and cannot do. And I think it spells it out. No one violating this means you're not gonna be allowed to use the company car, as it were, because it spells out what you can and cannot do.
So, Madam Chair, just maybe some clarification for myself as we talk to the department heads about this. The five listed positions on page five are the positions that will be allowed to use, for use of vehicle 24/7, I guess. Any other department, so they, these, just to be clear, these positions here are not the ones that are gonna be charged the IRS fringe benefit.
Correct.
Are we allowing any other department to take a vehicle home? I guess that's the question that I have above and beyond.
That would be up to the town administrator.
Okay.
That would be the request made by that employee to the town administrator, and the town administrator would have to approve it.
And then that's where we'd kick in the 15 of the fringe benefit.
Correct.
But should we also note, as it says in Mass General Law about the emergency personnel, not talking about the police department?
No, it says here, well, it's in the policy where those five individuals laid. It's what we're determining, we're telling them, we're saying that these are our emergency 24/7.
So the policy is dictating that these are the emergency, what the town is deeming as an emergency.
Right. The vehicles classified as 24-hour emergency use for the town are: director of public works, superintendent, assistant superintendent of infrastructure, park supervisor, water, wastewater supervisor, animal control officer.
Okay, so someone that has a vehicle now... Oh, Tim? Director of Public Works?
Yes.
Tim Barber.
So, Director of Public Works, Tim Barber. So, in looking at emergency response personnel, we have a number of operators that are, that hold a pager that are on call for emergency response. Typically, we've always allowed them to take a vehicle home.
Well, if they're on, okay, if they're on call, that is well within your purview as a department head to do that. Okay? Because, I mean, they're not on call every 24/7.
Right.
You're on call 24/7.
Correct.
Paul and Derek are on call 24/7. And now Antonio is on call 24/7. Those are the guys that have the vehicle that need it when it goes. Now, employee number one, who's on call up until Sunday, and then employee two, next Sunday, takes the vehicle. That's something entirely different as your department head. So you would notify them of this policy, and then that would be there. I would say, for those guys on call, they would be exempt from the fringe benefit thing. So we may have to just include that, a phrase on call.
All right, so now I'm looking at, this is more than five people. So are the people that you mentioned, Tim, superintendent slash assistant superintendent of infrastructure, is it superintendence, assistant superintendence of infrastructure? What are the titles of these gentlemen that you were talking about?
Superintendent of services and infrastructure. Then we have the assistant superintendent of services and infrastructure. Then the superintendent of water and sewer. And the superintendent of water pollution control. Then, you know, additionally, we have personnel who are on call that hold a pager, that are...
Technically, this is, it's seven vehicles, five categories.
So these are the categories. Okay. I'm trying to wrap my head around this because...
Well, coming from zero and going to 60, yeah, we need to wrap our head around it.
Yeah.
Because we have nothing, there's nothing on the books.
Because I know that there are other individuals that feel that they need their vehicle.
And they would have to talk to the town administrator and make their case.
Yes.
But I do think by having the department head sign off, we just need to, we need to corral this. We get a problem.
Most of the time, the people here do their job, they do their job while they work for the town.
Right.
So from nine to four, you know, they have the town vehicles available to them, okay?
And it's very...
And then when they go home, they don't need the town vehicle to go home. The vehicle can be parked over here.
It also is very clear in here that if you're not doing town business, this is not your personal vehicle.
Correct.
If you need to run, if you're home and you need to go grocery shopping, this is not the car you take.
Right. Because in today's day and age, everybody has a camera. Everybody has a phone.
And they call.
And they call.
And, you know, I got a call this weekend about someone who saw a town vehicle in Rhode Island over the weekend. And I said, we will be addressing it. And I'm hoping this policy addresses it.
It does, out of state. We're gonna have a few bumps in the road.
We will.
Yeah, I mean, you know, it's, I can tell you right now, this is not 100%. You know, it's going to be work on it, but it's a start.
It's a start because we absolutely had nothing. So I thank you for taking the...
I mean, if this was a...
The attaboy.
If this was a marathon, this is three quarters of the way.
Yep. So we'll just make sure that we have a sign off on here for their supervisor. And then because all of this comes to the select board, as in here, the select board also, this is a change because the list of all municipal vehicles currently is kept by someone, I believe, at DPW. So we want this to come to the select board office.
Just a CC copy.
She can have this as well.
We can put something there on the plate number too because obviously each vehicle has its own plate, so we can track who's taking what vehicle.
And then we further want to talk about standard purchasing in the future and making sure all vehicles are labeled Town of Dartmouth, et cetera, et cetera.
And we get the right vehicles.
Right.
Like, we're here in the wintertime. When we do have winter, we have snow. A vehicle, two-wheel-drive vehicle for town use?
Doesn't make sense.
This doesn't cut it. Just like four-wheel-drive plow trucks.
And Madam Chair?
Yes.
While Ron and Tim...
I know what you're gonna say.
I know. I'm so paranoid.
Pour me a Coke.
While the DPW members are here, or board member and director, be very leery of the purchase of electric-only vehicles going forward. From what I understand, it's gonna be challenged. So if there's any investment in the near future on a large, heavy-duty vehicle that's electric-only, ixne. We've got to, we'll talk about it first. But I think that requirement is gonna change.
I can't see the size of the battery on a two-ton dump truck.
In the Northeast.
That's the other part of the truck.
So that requirement has been delayed for one year. I think currently till January of 2026.
Okay.
So, like you said, it might get further delayed or cut, so.
Yeah, good.
So we're not pursuing that. Currently, we did get funded to reconstruct or refurbish one of our existing solid waste vehicles, so we're gonna work on refurbishing an existing vehicle.
Which cost, which cost how much?
$400,000.
$400,000. Thank you.
It's almost as much as buying a new diesel.
Right. Ridiculous. All right. Thanks, Tim.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Before we, are we ready to act on this?
Make a motion to approve the policy as amended by the corrections and the suggestions of the additions.
Second.
Go ahead, Stan.
Moved by Mr. McDonnell, seconded by Mr. Mickelson. All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Great.
Thank you very much, Mr. McDonnell.
Welcome.
So you'll take care of that?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. All right. Dartmouth Historical Commission, Padenarum Village sign.
Hello.
Hello, hello. Thank you for your patience.
Very happy to. Madam Chairperson, gentlemen, I'm Robert Mahold. I'm the chair of the historical commission in town here. And back in '84, '85, the village of Padenarum was declared a national historic district. Been 40 years later this year. For many years, there was a sign in town on...
The Woodhouse shop.
Exactly. And that changed hands a couple times. And then when the, what's it called, the Strawberry Rose, something like that, was renovated?
Strawberry moon.
Strawberry moon. The sign disappeared. And it was a privately-owned property in any regard. And so, we don't know where the sign went. We tried to locate it, talked to some other folks in the Padenarum Business Association. My board has decided to fund another sign, a couple hundred bucks, not a big deal. But we don't want to put it on private property anymore. So what I'm requesting to do is get permission to put it on the lot where the Harbor Masters plot is. There's currently a wooden sign, a two-pole kind of structure that talks about King Philip's War and about the historic nature of the village. I don't know if you've seen the materials. I sent some slides along. But the sign will look just like it is there. We've already had it made. And I'm trying to seek permission to get it put, mounted on a couple poles so it's visible for people who visit the area and know that, especially to tie in with the Padenarum Business Association 40th anniversary around Padenarum days later this summer, is the intent. So that's just a small part of my job, but I'm trying to get this done for them and get your permission to get it put onto Town of Dartmouth land. That's my ask.
DPW can put it in.
Any questions? Anyone?
No.
Is that in?
Go for it.
Okay, great.
Excellent. And I know that's the last weekend of July is our Padenarum days, so...
Little hoopla, maybe some cameras and whatever else, so.
Beautiful.
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Mr. McDonnell?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. O'Neill. All in favor?
Aye. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you for taking care of that. All right. Next, N. Increasing DPW Board Discussions. I believe this came from you, Mr. Tattelbaum.
Yes, thank you. And since I brought it up, thank you for putting it on the agenda. Brought it up. I've had some discussions with other DPW board members and others involved in the charter commission, et cetera, et cetera. And I'm not sure of the procedure. I know there are people on this board more of an expert than me. As to, the goal would be to try to get it onto the fall time meeting, however that works, so we can then move forward. But I'm here to say, whatever we can do, as soon as we can do to get this moving is what I like to do, and that's why I bring it up for discussion.
And how many members you want to...
My position would go from three to five. And I'm...
You may recall that this was something discussed at, with the charter commission, when we had a charter commission. And it then became something that they wanted to wait on, given the efficiency study, which we heard is not done yet. I wish we had moved when we moved, when we...
Agreed. Well, maybe we could, we should bring that board in and have a meeting with them and get some input. Whatever we need to do to do it or not do it and get it done quickly, or forget about it because we don't get the support, is what I would like to do. And if it means we invite the DPW board in to discuss it with us?
I think it was something that the charter at the time fully understood and was prepared to support. But it was...
Well, the procedure would be this board to sponsor an article for the fall time meeting to increase the, to increase the board membership from three to five.
And then whatever town meeting... We do that without...
Whatever town meeting makes the decision, then it goes, if town meeting approves it, then it has to go before the voters, April of 2026. After that, if it gets passed, then of course it has to go through the state to make sure it's okay. And then we could probably have a five-member board by July 1st of 2026.
Well, I think, but to make sure we confirm that with the town council. Whatever it is to get it done.
That is the process, David.
Okay, so I can only speak for myself. And as a previous member of the charter commission who supported it then, I was very disappointed in the pushback we received at that point from you, Mr. Tattelbaum. I'm just gonna say it. So, saying that, we should wait for everything for this efficiency study. And we felt that a three-member board is not efficient.
I think there were, no, I think there were other issues and complications. It wasn't just that. And I, to me, at this point in time, and maybe, for whatever the reason it happened then, whether it be a misunderstanding or some pushback from that board, I think at this point in time, it's a simple enough process that we should try to do it.
I will certainly check.
I just like to say that I concur with you. I think at the time, I think we may have had the votes to do it. However, Mr. LaBelle is here, and I'm pretty sure his board would support it. I think it's important for us to continue to bring it up and get it on, either in front of charter review, to get it on a warrant because I think it really does put the board members at a disadvantage when they're trying to take some time off. When they want to do a site visit and they can only have one person there. And they may have, they may have a need for one or two. So I wouldn't mind hearing from Mr. LaBelle on what he thinks the, or what his opinion is of adding a couple more members to the DPW board.
Thank you very much. Again, I apologize for being tardy. A good friend of mine told me a long time ago, when you're gonna read something, read every word. Well, I didn't. So I figured the meeting started after the executive session. It is difficult to have a three-member board. And, you know, public works is a huge responsibility. And it's what makes the town click and run. And everybody goes to public works for a lot of needs. And, you know, I have to, I'm sure you all are very uniquely aware that this is a great board. Some talented people, very smart people on the board. And I'm honored to work with them. And it's kind of fun for me because I'm retired now, so it keeps me in the game a little bit. But it is true. You know, I was talking to Rob the other day, and I said, is it okay if we talk? Because, you know, it can be construed as being inappropriate. So I support it. You know, I think the other board members would support it. And I'm hoping that the select board would support it and move it, you know, through the process to get this going. You know, two more board members. Because it is, you know, I'm retired now. I like to travel. And a lot of times, it's, my wife says, how come you're bringing your computer? And I said, because there's a board meeting. And she says, you're gonna work. But I would appreciate if it would be considered.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. So, and after reviewing some of the DPW meetings and hearing the other members concur, I'd like to make a motion that we...
Pursue this.
That we pursue an increase of the board members from three to five. You know, pursuant to the procedure that Mr. McDonald had brought forward and get this in front of the, either the Town Charter Committee or, you know...
I'll see which way we...
At town meeting. At town meeting, yeah.
I will double check on which way we need to go. But this is good because we need to start formulating that warrant.
Yeah.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
So, motion moved by Mr. O'Neill, seconded by Mr. McDonald. All, oh, yes.
So, we, you mentioned you'll confirm meetings through town council?
I will.
Okay.
I will. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. All right, next. We have residents at Hawthorne 40B project property valuation. I believe, Mr. Mickelson, this was something that you were...
Yes.
Wanted to talk about.
And you suggested that we come up with some numbers. So, 970 Tucker Road is the location. So, in FY '25 value was $1,576,200. Sale price in 12521, sold for, property sold for $2,300,000. So, that being said, we're talking about taking land from the, from this $2,300,000. But there are other things that could get in the way. But what I think at this point, the board, if we're interested, we can get three votes. That we need to vote in favor of hiring a commercial real estate company to do a current value of that property, with or without the 40B attached. Because the 40B has nothing to do with our, my conversations over the years. This goes back to when David Kressman was in power and Sean McGinnis and I. So, we've talked about, I've talked to both gentlemen, have talked to this board on and on and on about doing exactly that, taking that property. This is a once-in-a-lifetime investment for the future of Dartmouth. It might never happen again. We're land poor, there's no question about it. That would, that property would give us an opportunity to hold land and build, build buildings that the towns might need in the future. It's an investment in the future of Dartmouth. I can't, it's that, it just seems that easy. We're not going to have another shot at it. I think this is the time. So, I'd like to make a motion that we hire a commercial real estate company to get the current values.
Do we have a motion on the floor?
We need to request for proposals.
Right. But before, well, we can certainly get a second, and then we can discuss this motion.
Second for discussion.
Second for discussion, thank you. Let's discuss. Mr. O'Neill? I can smell the wheels burning.
I defer to Mr. O'Neill.
Yeah. We would need to get, we would need to put out an RFP for the valuation for services and then evaluate the RFPs. That being said, I don't have a problem with going out and finding out what the value of the property is for our purposes. The problem that I have now is that that property cannot be judged in the condition that it's in because this is now a reactionary action by the town because of a proposal to put housing on that property. And the value of that property is now going to be based upon the proposal of the property with the housing on it. And in an eminent domain case, that, the values is somewhere between what the value of the property is and then what the commercial value of that property is fully developed. So, it could be, you know, somewhere between one and a half to two and a half million dollars on the low end. It could be much higher after that. And that's something that we have to think about in the long run. I'm not really thrilled about the proposal on that property. I think it's, I think the access to that property is absolutely abysmal because it's right on a dangerous curve. And anybody that used to go to those during the events on that property knows there's a problem there. Now, you're going to have house, now you're going to have in traffic in and out all the time. You know, it just creates more of a problem. But I, I want, I don't have a problem getting the valuation. I have concerns about the results of that evaluation and what could possibly be in a court case. Because if we try to do eminent domain, it's court. And it's going to be up to somebody sitting in a black robe that's going to say what the town has to pay for it. And that bothers them.
And also, just my belief on that is that when we go for eminent domain, we have to be very specific on what we need it for.
Correct.
So...
The use of the town.
I think it has to be, I think it has to be a little more specific than that.
Be more specific.
So, the other thing is, that question about the value, it's, at this point, it, nothing, there's no, there were no permits. And it's ambiguous to think that the full project would be worth X amount of dollars. Who's to, who's to say that they're going to go through with the whole project? Will they be able to sell these homes, phase one, phase two, phase three? If, whatever they may be, I don't know.
Well, and that's why, that's, that's who we'd be hiring. We'd figure that out, yeah. Mr. Tattlebaum?
I'm all for looking, investigating the process. I am concerned, there's an awful lot of legal issues attached to this. And I'm wondering if we should get town council's opinion on the process and what we do and what the results might be. And I can understand that there's a certain value as it is right now. And are we going to be subject to a value that could be substantially more because?
And that would be the RFP. And I have had a conversation with council. And that was exactly, this is the process. We would have to do the RFP for specifically what we're looking for. And it would be looked at as, in its current state, the recent evaluations that Mr. Mickelson just talked to about, but also what's being proposed. And so, if, if it's $10 in its current state and the proposal says it's $100, then most likely, we would have to come up with $100. So, I wish it was just that smaller number.
No, I think the kind of project that's being proposed does have tons of limitations for us as a town.
Well, you know, I look at this and I don't, I, I understand as a town to look at this. And I don't want this property to be looked at differently because for, you know, full transparency, this property is in Stan's backyard. But Stan, on behalf of his work for the town, is looking at what we've talked about in the past when nothing was happening on that property, before the gentleman who owns it now owned it. We, I know that Mr. Mickelson had spoken even then about, you know, we should buy it, we should look at it. And in looking at some of the paperwork that's been created in response to the current owner's desire to do something with the property, there is stipulations on that property as we saw from 19, I think it was '73 and '79.
Recreation only.
That said it was recreation only. And I don't know going forward if that's going to make a difference at the state level when they evaluate that property. But for us going forward, thinking about that, if we were to end up pursuing it, we need to also keep that in mind.
Correct.
And the location of it, because I've done a lot of soul searching because currently, we have several pieces of property being proposed for these large buildings. Old Westport Road. Hathaway Road. Why aren't we looking at all of them? This one is a unique piece of property because of the way that it runs into a water source. And here we are so concerned about our water, our water quality. This is a unique piece. And when we've spoken about it before, passive recreation, what can we do? So, I think it's unique. And that's not saying that the other properties aren't worth. But I do think in going forth, I know there would be an extensive fee if we looked at every single property.
It's centrally located.
But this one is environmentally unique to the needs of Dartmouth. And I think it needs to be looked at with the, that recreational stipulation. And I would hope that that would get some consideration.
Question, Mr. Brooks?
Yes.
In your conversation with town council, are we up to get something very definitive from him, an opinion about what may happen? Or is it going to be somewhat of a vague try and see?
I feel it was very definitive in what we've talked about tonight. Getting an RFP to go out. The proposals are looked at. A firm is selected to do the evaluation, to review paperwork such that Mr. Mickelson talked about, and also look at the paperwork of the proposal, the proposed project. And we will then be asked what we will want to use the property for, but they will come back with a specific number. And then, we have to decide if we have that money.
So, the definitive part is that the number will be, what he's saying to us is the number will be, will probably, most assuredly be substantially higher than the current value.
Correct.
He's saying that definitively.
Yes.
And it could be a lot, it could be more, a lot more, or the full value of this property.
Too rich.
Right.
Yeah.
So, but he's saying it will be substantially more. Is that, is that the question?
Yes, he did, he said that because this is now being looked at, previously, previous owner, we probably could have done a better deal because that owner would have looked at it as doing nothing and having cash at hand. And now, they have this different plan. That being said, if, without a crystal ball saying that Boston is going to look at this thing and say, hey, we have this on the books, this recreation, this can't be. You bought this land and it's worth, it's worth nothing to you.
That's one of the, one of the possible outcomes. But what I think you're saying is that the, we're pretty assured that it will, the land will be worth substantially more than it is now in terms of what it will cost us to buy.
Well, he didn't tell me substantially, but he did say it'd be more money. So, it's impossible to...
No, I'm not looking. Okay, but because of that process and the RFP...
Could be another million dollars. Could be another million dollars, who knows?
Yeah, it could be four million.
Could be.
Okay. So, I guess we're voting on the fact that we have potential to pay?
No, no. All we're voting on is to get an RFP to see if there's firms, firms out there who are willing to do this evaluation. That's all we're voting on.
Right.
That's it.
And...
And once they do the evaluation and we have that, then we can decide whether or not we have the will and the finances to go further in the process.
Are we, are we voting on to look for an RFP? Or when we find a firm, they'll come back to us and tell us the process? Or just say, go ahead and do it?
No, no, no.
Now, the vote, the motion was to go out and request proposals for an RFP. So, that means we're sending out a statement saying that the town of Dartmouth wishes to have a real estate appraisal done on such and such, such and such a property, such and such. Submit your bids for the proposal.
Scope of work.
Scope of work. And then, eventually, we have to decide which firm will do the work. So, the first step is to get the proposals. The second step would be to either go with the firm to do the work or not to do the work.
Okay, thank you.
So, thank you. That being said, we don't, the typical timeline would be before our next meeting, I believe the RFP will be written because that, that happens in-house with consultation of our lawyer. And I would say at our next meeting, we will put this on because they will then be, we'll be able to discuss what the timeline is.
We'll be able to discuss the RFP.
Right.
Whether or not it's been released or not, you know, that's, if the board wants it, the board wants to review the RFP before it goes out and then release it, they could also do that.
Okay, so, July 14th, we'll put on the agenda to review the RFP. And so, we'll know that it'll go out. That takes, I think it was 21 days. And then, that's open, so we're looking at middle of August. And then, that will confirm with a firm. That firm gets a period of time to do the work. We'll ask them to work as quickly as possible because this other project is going to continue. So, all right. So, we have a motion on the floor that was...
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. McDonald. We have a double second with Mr. Tattlebaum. And so, I will ask, this is just to get an RFP for the evalu, for services to evaluate the property at 970 Tucker Road. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? Okay, that was, everyone, you're very welcome.
Thank you.
All right. Now, our board in committee appointments. And you will see that within our agenda, we do have, sorry, I got to bring it back up because the computer went to...
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
Make a motion that we appoint John Souza to the Community Preservation Committee, Jonathan Galashaw to the DCTV Board of Directors, Brock Cudero to the Disability and Accessibility Commission, Margaret Mary Cabral to the Sister City Delegation Commission, Robert Mahold to the Veterans Advisory Board, and Alvin Newman and Helene Chuba to the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Second.
And I will say, the only one that, these two gentlemen, we did not get the full report back from the Zoning Board of Appeals. We only got one half of, so we don't know their attendance.
In today's...
Did it come today? Okay.
I've got it here somewhere.
Yeah, they're, they're very, they're very, they, they show up.
Okay, all right. So, that was a motion made. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Mickelson. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. We've appointed now everyone. Thank you for taking it that way. It was a little quicker. Interim Town Administrators update.
Madam Chair, so, we'll be holding a staff cookout tomorrow, 12 to 2, in the back parking lot of Town Hall. All departmental staff are welcome to attend this event in appreciation of the hard work and dedication to the town. Rachel Desiel, the town's new substance coordinator, abuse coordinator, will be starting tomorrow, July 1st. Her office will be located in the Charles Lawrence Meeting Room at Town Hall, third floor, room 314. Are excited to have her on board. The brush area will be closed on Friday, July 4th, in observance of the Independence Day holiday. Residential collection of solid waste and recycling will be open during normal hours, Monday through Thursday, 7:00 AM to 3:00. And the transfer station will be open during normal hours, July 1st, Thursday, July 3rd, 7:30 to 3:15, and Saturday, July 5th, 7:30 to 2:45. And finally, as you know, this is my last meeting with the board. As the interim town administrator, I'd like to personally thank the board for allowing me to fill this position for over a year. It's hard to believe it's been a year. It's been a great opportunity to work closely with the board and collectively and individually with all of you. And hope that some of the ideas that we processed and had in, through that time, that we worked together and continue those going forward. And that's all I have.
And, yes, you hear, it has, it has moved right along. And I don't believe your hair is any grayer.
I think it's, it's all ungrayer, it's just short.
It just has less hair, that's all.
It's, yeah. Just keep, keep it... Just keep, keep it tight, right? Um, so nicely done, nicely done. I'm sure you're willing, willing to turn this baton over. So, thank you. Um, we don't have anything, uh, to report out on the proposed town projects this week. Um, and in old business, any of those topics?
Nothing.
Okay. We have the minutes of June 2nd and June 16th to approve.
Madam Chairman, I reviewed them and then I didn't find any errors, at least I couldn't see. So I make a motion to approve.
Seconded by?
Second.
Mr. Mickelson. Um, any other questions? All, nope. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. Thank you. And now select board updates. Mr. O'Neil?
Uh, I don't have anything specific other than just to thank Gary for the, uh, great job that he's done, uh, during his term as interim, uh, also as co, uh, and also thank Chris Vitale for, uh, for he and Gary stepping up during a very, very difficult time for the town. Uh, did a wonderful job. Thank you, Gary.
Yes, thank you.
Ditto.
Mr. McDonnell?
Well, Gary still has two weeks to go, so I was going to save my accolades until the 14th. So, I, I, I reserve my right.
Okay. I like that.
To the 14th.
I like that. Yeah, we'll, we'll find out, yeah. That's not, yeah. Wheels on off, yeah. We got a few more things.
Gary, it's been an absolute pleasure. You're a real pro. Thank you.
If I could just stop.
Anything else? Dave? Did you have?
Uh, yeah, a couple of things.
Okay.
Firstly, uh, I was able to, I think others have well, uh, met with Cody, our incoming town administrator. We met for a lengthy discussion and I'm, I'm more than enthused about his, uh, hitting the ground running, uh, his attitude, um, speaking of all the town people he's talked to and ready to go. And I'm, I think it's, uh, it's, it's, we're ready and we're high time for it and I, it's going to be great. Uh, on a smaller note, I don't know if anybody received, I received an email from a resident on a couple of smaller issues. Uh, this one came up, uh, that, um, the, the drive-through between Lowe's and Best Buy, uh, once again, it looks like, um.
Looks like crap.
It looks like a Serengeti. Could we send a letter to them?
I've contacted the property owner.
Okay.
Three times already, uh, and was told that it was getting done. This was about a month ago. Mr. McDonnell had talked to me about it.
They did do it once a while ago, I think.
Right. There's still nothing being done there. The, um, the, 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 the grass is growing to trees now. I mean, the size of trees. So, uh, maybe a letter, uh, to them. Uh, they're in New York.
Well, and, and maybe to say, we'll do it and charge you double.
Yeah.
Yes, they are in New York.
Okay.
I mean, we, there could be fines imposed if, if, if there's not, um.
Well, if they were notified a month ago, I would, I wouldn't hesitate to say that, um, every day you don't do it, it'd be, I don't know what our legal, uh, right is, but, uh, I, I wouldn't mix any words at this point. Dangerous.
Your job's not over, Gary.
I contacted them.
Put it on your list. Put it on your list.
And it's, it's very narrow and dangerous, there's no doubt.
Yeah, it is.
Okay. Uh, the other, uh, that was also mentioned, uh, the Route 6 cowwash and the Midas Muffle shop across the street, you mentioned as being the same thing. Uh, I don't know if we could send letters to those owners. The Route 6 cowwash across from the bagel shop.
Yeah, Alex.
And the Midas, is it Midas, uh, next to the bagel shop as well?
Muffle place, yeah.
Uh, I, I don't know the exact issue. I, I know it's over there, but, um.
What's wrong with those two?
Same, same overgrowth, sidewalk issue.
The, the, the cowwash has always been a problem. It's, it's an owner who doesn't live in town. Um, it's an owner who owns several of them. Um, and they're, um, the upkeep on the property is, is, is well to be less than desired. The problem with the Midas one, um, because it's right next to the Pasco Mansard, they have to be very careful because of the Rivers Act. But I think maybe that's something you should, we should contact conservation, um, to take a look at, um, maybe cleaning that up, um, you know, cleaning up that sloughway on both sides, um, because there is some, um, I know we did it, mm, maybe 20 years ago, and I think it needs to take a look at it again.
Well, the Route 6, uh, you know, it's private property, part of it, they want to let it look like that, but if it's impending among the sidewalks and driveways, that's different. It's a safety issue.
Right, that's a different story.
Maybe a letter to both. Um, and, and also, the lastly on this list, uh, last on this, uh, she mentioned and showed pictures of more signs, uh, commercial signs on telephone poles, Stanley's favorite issue. She sent me a couple of pictures.
Going out tomorrow to do it.
Well, one of them, one of them is, uh, a pavement company, um, out of Rhode Island. Um, and they basically carpet bombed the town, uh, with their signs, and they must have gotten somebody with a bucket truck, because it's up high.
I can't get it.
Can't just.
Stanley can't reach it. Um, and even when Paul Murphy had his little, uh, tool that he had on the Prius, uh, he wouldn't be able to reach it.
I, I think that, I think that what I, my solution to that would be that we, uh, we look at the sign, uh, we call them or write them and say, uh, every day the sign's up, it's $50, and let them take it down, not us.
Well, it should be, each pole location should be a violation.
If we have to establish a law that says we have the right.
But we have something.
Yeah, I think they've voted in.
We have it already. An, an exact penalty.
Yeah.
I don't know if we have one.
I think we do.
A per diem, a per diem.
These, this paving company has signs, uh, on at least three or four poles on Farnes Corner Road, further up on, on Tucker Road, uh, they also have it on Reed Road, um, they also have it on Cross Road.
Well, she's got three.
So they, they carpet bombed everything.
She's got three more that we haven't mentioned. I, do we have a specific right to say?
The building commissioner does.
No, no. As a town, to say to these people.
He represents the town, the building commissioner.
Do we have a right, the building, say, um, Mr. Hardwood Floors, uh, that sign, as many of you had, it'll be $50 a day until you take them down? Do we have that right? If we don't, we should have a law.
Send them an notice.
What's that?
We send them an notice.
Send an notice.
If, if we know who the vendor is.
I understand. Uh, but even as a phone call here, I mean, do, do, do we have that specific right to say, if we keep it up, it's $50 a day, or whatever the number is?
Whatever the violation is, we, we can find the, I don't know what that is.
Well, if we don't have the right, because then we can just send out the letters and, and, and they don't take it down, we can, we can charge them. I mean, whatever. But I just.
He's saying yes.
Yeah.
That, that, the building commissioner has that.
It's almost like what we did with the shopping carts, if remember that, Route 6? We had a load of shopping carts from the vendors.
The guy with the, uh, with the, uh, the refills for gas grills, he's got them all over the place, too. I mean, so, and he knows what he's doing, or he is sure of his doing.
I've been, I've been trying to get one sign on Farnes Corner Road for six months. Maybe we'll call the, uh, the landscape guy or the tiger.
Put it up. High, put it high, put it high.
Some insurance company to sign up at a pole.
Can I rent a, a bucket?
All right. Before we lose it completely, I have a couple of things.
Sorry that I, but I.
No, that's fine.
You're right.
That's fine, thank you. Um, I too have received a number of emails regarding, uh, continued concerns about crossing in Paden Narum, um, and, uh, at other locations on Elm Street. So I'm going to be asking that the, um.
She called me in the home.
Public safety officer, uh, come in the, uh, in the future, so we can, um, deal with that.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Um, other crossing concerns on Elm Street and in Paden Narum. So I'm going to ask the, um.
Status of the crosswalk?
Nope. This, this is beyond that, other places along Elm Street. Um, and, I mean, we can put in crosswalks, we can do other things, but it's really up to the people to cross in those crosswalks. The issues we've had in the past were people who were crossing in the crosswalks and were hit by in accidents with other people, but we have a number of people now that the summer is here, crossing, parking their car on Elm, on Elm Street or on Bridge Street, and just crossing. As opposed to going, so I, we just, I just want to have Officer Canaro here to address their concerns and address some of the suggestions that they had.
Next meeting?
I'm going to see how big the next.
Maybe sooner.
The next meeting is. Um, I also just want to remind everyone that, memory serves me, the libraries are closed on July 5th, uh, Saturday, July 5th, to give all library employees, um, the long weekend. So, keep that in mind. Uh, last week, I represented, I represented the, um, select board as an elected official with Portuguese Heritage at the Sister City Summit, which was Helen San Miguel, um, in the Azores. And, um, it was a lot of work for three days. Um, I did get to go to a feast, but we had a lot of panel discussions, a lot of very important people that, that, uh, spoke at our Sister City, um, delegation. So I'm going to pass around a few things. This is, um, all the folks that were at the Sister City Summit. Um, we were also had a display, um, of between the Dove and the Eagle, the Holy Ghost Feast of New England, which was on display, um, and not in this particular brochure, but, um, on display were pictures from our very own Summit Grove, uh, Holy Ghost Feast, which were nice to see. Um, I had the opportunity, the event was sponsored by FAD, which translates, Lucy, the Foundation of Luso-American Diplomacy. And, uh, as a gift, and I will be adding this to our collection, we received a book, uh, by Domingos Rabello of his artwork, um, which is beautifully, yeah, frightening. And, um, we also, I met with the mayor of La Gua, which is one of our sister cities, and received a gift from him to us, which is, um, unopened, unopened, a bottle of liqueur, uh, which was bottled in La Gua. When I received this back, it should still be unopened. And I attended their feast of the Holy Ghost and received this as well, so.
We're going to put that in.
We will be adding these items to the, um.
Pretty.
Got any balance out of it, you know?
Uh-huh. And I also receive, I also picked up on, on Azorian magazine, written in Portuguese. And I wanted to let you know that, um, I, uh, sourced through Enid Silver to Judith Lund, uh, Judith's books, Greetings from Dartmouth, Massachusetts, The Postcard History. Um, Judy signed these for me, and I was able to present one of these to the mayor of La Gua. So, um, our three sister cities on San Miguel are La Gua Provence and Noradent, uh, Noradesh, but they were not, um, they were not there. Uh, I could talk about this for hours, but it is late. But I will tell you, having been there and listened to them, I'm just going to pass those down. Uh, listen to them talk about the history of, um, sister cities, which actually started with Dwight Eisenhower. Um, and Dwight Eisenhower started People to People, which was to get youth to visit on other countries and experience that sort of cultural exchange. And out of that grew the Sister City Program. Um, and truth be told, we have not done a lot with the Sister City Program in a number of years, and this really inspired me to, I'm going to be reaching out to the Sister City Committee and talking to them about, um, reestablishing our connections. So I'll be talking more about that in the future.
Maybe we can invite them here.
We still have one, we still have one sister city that needs to be solidified, and that's with La Gua Algov.
Yes.
On the mainland. So, um, I know they have approved the protocol, we approved the protocol years ago, it got stuck with COVID.
With COVID.
So they finally approved it. It's just now getting together and getting it signed, so.
Excellent.
But this is their time of the year where they're just absolutely slammed with summer tourism.
Tourism and, and feast. Everyone's very busy. But I also spoke to, um, Roberto Maderas about it, and he is going to also pursue that. So, um, a wonderful, oh, a wonderful event.
Thank you for representing us, uh, towns.
I was, I was honored. Um, I was.
Glad you went, because I know I, I couldn't have.
Yes, I, and you were missed.